Thank you.
Okay, just give me the six o'clock straight up, we're gonna go ahead and begin our work session for our Duncanville City Council meeting for Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. In the first item in our work session, discuss our agenda items, ACM Abernathy.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Council. Yes, on the consent agenda, item eight is just to consider the minutes for several meetings we had over the last month. That includes the July first City Council meeting, the budget, preliminary budget workshop that was held on June twenty-sixth, as well as a special call meeting on June tenth and the City Council meeting on June seventeenth. Moving on to item B, if there's no questions on A, is just a resolution suspending the effective rate, date of the rate increase with Encore for July thirty-first. Encore did submit a proposed rate increase to go effect on that date. Working with the Encore Steering Committee, we are recommending to suspend that rate so that we can work with the Steering Committee to negotiate a settlement at a better rate. And that concludes the consent agenda. If there's any questions on that.
Sandy? Go ahead, item two, City Council Calendar. City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Calendar for July, we have Duck and Switch on July nineteenth, and that's a chamber event in downtown. July twenty-second is the joint meeting with Planning and Zoning and the Duncanville's Plan Block Party on July twenty-second at the Duncanville Field House at six o'clock. Coffee with the mayor on July twenty-fourth at the Senior Center. July twenty-eighth is the DCEDC meeting at six. Twenty-ninth is the budget workshop beginning at four. And the July thirtieth is the tip board meeting at six-thirty here at City Hall.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move into item three, briefings and presentations. Item A, Twenty-five Bond Committee Recommendations to City Council, and that would be, the presentation will be from Mr. Patrick Harvey, current Chair of the DCEDC. Where's yours?
Thank you. No, you could, if you're gonna help me out?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. It's one less moving part I have to deal with. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hope everyone is doing well. Want to thank Mr. Finch, Mr. Abernathy, and Mr. Mark, I'm still working on the last name, for their assistance as well as the entire staff of the city of Duncanville. Regardless of the nature of your contribution to getting this done, you may have simply just copied paper, but trust me, it is all important in the whole long scheme of things. And so, I will just go through the information that's on the screen, and you can stop me at any point and ask questions, and I'll try my best to give you an answer. I'm also accompanied by two members of the committee, Ms. Erica Browning and Mr. Barry Gordon. See anyone else? Who knows, they may come in later. So, twenty-twenty-five Bond Committee created by Resolution Number twenty-twenty-five dash four-two-one. Purpose of the Duncanville Citizen Bond Advisory Committee is to engage community members in a transparent collaborative process that prioritizes infrastructure investments and guides the city's decision-making regarding the twenty-twenty-five election. The charge of the committee will include considering the following questions. One, should the City Council call for a bond election? Two, should a portion of bond capacity be dedicated to infrastructure, facilities, and health and safety? Or so much. Three, consider the amount of bonding capacity available and the potential impact on the city's tax rate. Partly parenthetically, can we do it, and how much will it cost? Four, consider the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and other planning documents. Five, what other needs should be considered? Committee composition. The Duncanville Citizen Bond Advisory Committee will consist of five members with representation from key city groups and leadership, ensuring the diverse input and expertise. One individual nominated by each member of the Duncanville City Council, one member nominated by the Planning and Zoning Commission, one member nominated by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, DCEDC Board. The city manager and or their designated leader will serve as a liaison between the committee and the City Council, ensuring that the committee's findings are aligned with the city's strategic priorities and can be implemented effectively. So here are the members of the committee. Dr., I'm gonna chop up some of these names, I'm letting you know in advance. Charge to my head, not my heart. Dr. Vanessa Sassa, appointed by Mayor Contreras, Erica Browning, Vice Chair, appointed by Councilmember Gooden, Greg Zilka, appointed by Councilmember Barrichello, Kim Malone, appointed by Councilmember McNabb, Linda Young, appointed by Councilmember Coons, Barry Gordon, appointed by Councilmember Cherry Brown, Michael Wallach, appointed by Councilmember Penderbaker, Patrick Harvey, representing DCEDC, Alonda Columbus, representing PNZ. Timeline. January twenty-twenty-five, Council established the twenty-twenty-five Bond Committee. January through June twenty-twenty-five, Bond Committee evaluations, facility review slash financial impact slash report to Council. July twenty-twenty-five, Bond Committee to make recommendations to Council, August eighteen, twenty-twenty-five, last day to order general election or election on a measure, November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Election Day. How we doing so far? Any questions or comments? Keep on plowing through. Okay, the work of the twenty-twenty-five Bond Committee. Committee meetings, we had several. Committee convened on the following dates to discuss and evaluate various aspects of the city's need. March fifth, twenty-twenty-five, initial meeting to outline objectives and review the twenty-twenty-four Facility Needs Assessment. March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, tour of the Duncanville Service Center and discussions on infrastructure needs, election of Chair and Vice Chair. April seventh, twenty-twenty-five, tour of the police station, evaluation of public safety facilities. April seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, tour of the fire department and evaluation of facilities. May eighth, twenty-twenty-five, tour of parks and recreation and library facilities. May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, review of the twenty-twenty-five Under Report relating to the field house and sports facilities, comprehensive plan, general services and IT. June twenty, twenty-twenty-five, discussion on the twenty-twenty-five Dog Park Master Plan, Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve Master Plan, twenty-eighteen bond, and discussion on needs. June twenty, twenty-twenty-five, discussion on bonding needs, strategy, and draft report. July seventh, twenty-twenty-five was our final meeting to consolidate our findings and draft a recommendation for the City Council, which you all have in front of you. Okay, so these are the documents that we considered that set the context for our discussions and recommendations. So the twenty, twenty-twenty-four Facility Needs, twenty-twenty-five, Charles F. Ladd Nature Preserve, twenty-twenty-five, Dog Park Master Plan, twenty-twenty-five, Hudon, Hudon Sports Facility Report, twenty-twenty-five, Matrix Police and Fire Department Analysis, twenty-twenty-five, Duncanville, twenty-forty, Capital Improvement Plan, twenty-twenty-five, Inland Port Study, twenty-seventeen, Mark Naster Plan, nineteen ninety-nine Drainage Master Plan. The city's comprehensive plan that was being worked on at the same time we were deliberating, we considered that. Hilltop Securities provided financial and bond capacity analysis. And then finally, the city's audit history, financial policies, and debt ratio benchmarks. Okay, so there is a webpage, and that is a screenshot of the webpage. And let me see if I can recall how you get to. You click on the homepage, then you go to Citizens. Oh, I'm dying here. Citizens, and anyway, we'll go, yeah, we'll do it later. Okay, sorry about that. Assessment of the twenty-eighteen bond projects. And, and now, the next few slides, what we're gonna do is to, is autopsy the right word? Analyze, provide an explanation what happened with the twenty-eighteen bond projects. The bond sale was twenty-one-point-six million, total cost to date, thirty-four-point-two million, factors in the cost overrun, COVID, nineteen pandemic, uncertain supply chain, cost of goods and services, increase in city transition. So, after COVID, after the country was coming out of COVID, those of us who are old enough to remember, know that after the country was coming out of COVID, there was an inflation relation rage, the likes of which I personally hadn't seen since Jimmy Carter. But then, I, I remember that. I was just a wee lad in diapers on my mother's knee, and I remember seeing pictures of all of those cars lined up. Asked my mother, was it? Anyway, I digress. Proposition A, Parks and Recreation, bond amount six-point-six million dollars, total cost to date, ten million, just short of two-hundred thousand dollars, over budget, almost three-point-six million dollars. And then, I'll just kind of skip through that, but just take a moment to look at the various projects that were under the flag of Proposition A, some of which were finished, kids playgrounds, splash pad, some are not finished, primarily quite a bit to do with Harrington Park. So. Continuing Proposition A, Parks and Recreation Facilities, bond amount six-point-six million, total cost to date, ten-point-two million, over budget, three-point, almost six million. The status, I just mentioned a few seconds ago, Splash Pad in Kidsville have been finished. Harrington Park is still under construction, and several other components remain unfinished due to cost increases and limited funds, which we touched on. And that's the list right there. Proposition B, Streets, bond amount six million, six-hundred thousand dollars, total cost to date, thirteen-point-six million, over budget, almost six-point-five million. Asterisk, not including the intersection of Main and Camp Wisdom, which I'm not sure if that will happen at all. If I'm wrong, correct me. But anyway, the scope. Intersection at North Main between Camp Wisdom and I-20, South Cedar Ridge Drive between Big Stone Gap and West Reetland Road, East Daniel Dale Road between South Main Street and sixty-seven. And the status. Projects were completed in phases, substantial reconstruction completed for East Daniel Dale Road between Main Street and sixty-seven. City Council in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two changed the location of the Cedar Ridge, South Cedar Ridge Drive project to not Cedar Ridge Drive. Some segments were value engineered to remain within budget, and some scope reductions occurred. And that's the funding status. Thank you. Proposition D, Service Center, bond amount two-point-four million. And to provide a quick summary on the Service Center, the Service Center is basically being moved forward to this bond that we are recommending for the Council to move forward. Okay, committee evaluated a fiscal impact of a new bond and took a deep dive into the existing bond impact to taxpayers. Considerations were given to, from fifteen million to twenty-five million in new bonding, in terms of fifteen to twenty-five years. So, how much is this going to cost? Now, that's tough to see. Okay. So basically, what we have here is two scenarios. One is a traditional way of amortizing the loan, which is basically level. And so, the impact of paying the bonds that way would be a projected impact over and above the current rate of two-point-two cents. Then if we used an alternative method, which is wraparound, the impact would only be one-point-two-three cents. And so, what is wraparound? Wraparound is a way of arranging payments of the debt so that the principal gets pushed further into the future, and your first few payments are almost like interest only. We'll see that in a minute, or at least it'll come up on the screen. I don't know if we'll be able to see it. Ah, there we are. Okay. So basically, what we have here is total sets valuation, three-point-eight-seven-four million is what it is right now. And basically, what Hilltop Securities did was, they say, okay, let's assume an annual increase of three percent over the current assessed valuation, and says right there, three percent. So, the outstanding debt that we have right now, which is the fiscal year twenty-eighteen bonds, this is the debt that we have right now. And payments range generally just about the same amount, one-point-four million, give or take. And then, what that shows is how an amortization looks when you're using a level payment. All the payments are the same. This one, on this side, we have the police facility, and the police facility is going to be repaid from property taxes. This is the Service Center, and it's going to, we recommend it be repaid from the?
Utility.
Utility, thank you. So. So, when you, when you look at the payments and how they break down with the police facility, if you'll notice, they move every year. It's not quite the same amount. It starts out here, a couple of years later, it jumps up. Another year too later, it jumps up. And look at the principal, sixty thousand. And then it ramps up until you get to out here, which is twenty forty two. Uh, and then it, it ramps all the way up to, uh, one million thirty thousand. What the impact of that is, is that it doesn't hammer the property tax rate. It kind of ramps up to it. So, it's just a way of attempting to mitigate the impact of, of the property tax interest and sinking fund rate. Uh, so that people won't get hammered by that. And then when you look at the, uh, service center, then again, it's very similar to the debt we have now, it's leveled. So it's basically the same amount, year over year over year. Okay. So earlier I talked about five questions that the committee was charged to address. One, should the city council call for a bond election? Yes. Committee recommends that the council, city council call for a general obligation election in November twenty twenty five, too. Should a portion of the bond capacity be dedicated to infrastructure, facilities and health and safety? If so, how much? Yes. The committee unanimously recommends the full twenty million proposed bond package with a twenty year term be dedicated to infrastructure and facilities that directly support public health, safety and essential city, city functions. Three, consider the im- consider the amount of bonding capacity available and its potential impact on the city's tax rate. A few moments ago, I went through some of our considerations, uh, in looking at that. Looking at the city financially right now. Bullet point one, the city's current debt ratio is just point zero four, five percent. Well below the national median of two point two percent, which indicates a low existing debt load relative to assessed valuation. So we do have the capacity to sell debt. Bullet point two, Duncanville maintains a strong double A bond rating, which reflects our financial fiscal management, our policies in various fiscal areas and lending confidence for long-term bar. Bullet point three, the city has ample mining capacity under state law to issue new debt while maintaining responsible reserve levels and operational stability. Four, consider the rec- recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan and other planning documents, and we went through that list several moments ago. Five, what other needs should be considered? The consi- the committee also considered emerging and community-supported needs identified through site tours, presentations from city staff, public comments, and recent planning efforts, which includes parking recreation enhancements, phase one of the Dog Park. Cultural arts infrastructure such as event and gallery space. Fire station improvements such as the potential for a third fire station based on response time data. And finally, continued investment in trails and the nature preserve. While not part of the core bond recommendations, the committee encourages the city council to use available fund balance or other alternative funding mechanis- mechanisms to advance the smaller but meaningful improvements alongside the bond program. My committee recommendation. One, construction of a new police facility. Current police department building no longer meets the operational safety or space needs of the department or the community. A modern purpose-built police facility will improve response capabilities, enhance officer and public safety and provide a secure, efficient environment for law enforcement services. And the funding strategy is twelve million in bond funding with debt service incorporated into the general fund tax rate. Ensuring no tax rate increases above the fiscal year twenty five tax rate. Okay, and that is the rendisherin, renditioning of the building. Okay, another rendition, rendition of the building from a different perspective. Being added from the back. What's that? Oh, a nice version. Artist rendisherin, renditioning, I keep saying that. I'm gonna get it right, I'm gonna turn. Okay, another rendering. There we go, rendering. Okay. All right, uh, let's see. Our recommendation continued on the police fil- facility, utilizing a design build concept. No slash limited change orders. Uh, twelve million estimated expense. Possibly twenty thousand square foot, two and a half times the size of the current facility. Would include joint use room for training and public safety slash court. General fund, no tax rate increase. Anticipated nine hundred fifty thousand in debt service. Estimated tax impact, uh, point zero one four in the general fund. Okay. Uh, so first part of the reckon- recommendation was the police facility. Second part is construction of a new public works service center facility. The existing service center is outdated, undersized, imposes logistical and safety challenges to staff. A new facility will improve fleet maintenance operations, storm response, day-to-day field operations, material storage and operations, field operations could critical to maintaining streets, water, wastewater and sanitation services. Uh, recommended funding strategy. Eight million in bond funding with debt service coming from the general utility fund. Uh, let's see, directly aligning cost responsibility with the operations the facility supports, resulting in no increase in the current utility rate. In other words, we have capacity in the existing rates, uh, to do this. In addition, two million from the twenty eighteen bond and two million from the interest of the twenty eighteen bond should result in twelve million available for this project as it's drawn up right now on the drawing board. Uh, I wanted to say this at the beginning, but now that I'm thinking about it, it's a good time to say it before I forget again. This is a preliminary document. And as we, uh, continue to go through this process, we'll continue to sharpen our pencils and, uh, tweak some numbers to reflect things that we learn along the way. So, that's, uh, an artist rendishering of the, did I say that right? Could we understand? An artist drawing, an artist drawing of what the envision it'll look like. A picture.
The picture.
Thank you, a picture, yes, thank you. Okay, next slide. Another picture. How it would look. How it would look, how it would look, okay. Um, let's see, so continuing with the new service center, also a design build concept, no slash limited change orders. Ten to twelve million estimated expense. General fund, no impact. Utility fund absorbed in current fee structure. Anticipated six hundred thirty thousand in debt service, we saw that a few moments ago. Current fee structure could sustain a debt payment. As expenses are reduced in the utility fund, water leaks corrected, the opportunity to make improvements will continue to increase. So, I'm given to understand that Public Works is working on this system where they know where the leaks are and they can go out and fix them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
So I have a list of, uh, let's see.
Okay, we have, we have twenty seven. We're going on time for the next slide.
Let's start with thirty four point two million cost to date for projects that were in the twenty eighteen bond, but there are still outstanding bonds, uh, outstanding projects that have, uh, not been completed. So, and I hear you say no change orders. So how will we be able to accomplish these proposed bond projects without going over and avoiding change orders? So that's first question.
Okay. Let me answer that by saying, first and foremost, I'm a finance guy. And I have, uh, seen situations where this was the plan at this particular point in time. But then, when things got underway, there were
Dissevered.
Yes, unintended consequences. Now, the interesting thing about design build, and I may need, this, he need to help me, just in case I, I misspeak. So, uh, let me, let me tell you what I know and then you can amplify it. What I know is that on the design build, or at least what I've learned, what I've learned on the design build is that the design elements and the construction elements are married together. And so with them being married together and working on the same page, that creates conditions that can reduce significantly change orders.
Yeah, so, um, I believe with the design build, uh, as which you mentioned is an opportunity and some of the advantages of the design build. There is an advantage and disadvantage to everything, but that, some of the advantages of the design build is, uh, basically the fact that the engineer and the construction really work closely together, being one entity instead of two, uh, in the case of the design bid build. And, and then being able to sort things together, um, and avoid that, uh, the disagreements as much as possible that usually happens, happens between the construction company and the engineer, uh, of design. Uh, on that perspective does help sometimes with, you know, less, uh, change orders or no change orders. However, uh, in construction, you can never say we can guarantee no change orders because there are unforeseen conditions that might happen. However, to avoid the change orders, I think it's, it's done through, uh, developing a good contingency in, in the cost estimates. And that's, that's what is done here, um, in, in these cost estimates. We're conservative, uh, in terms of, you know, uh, avoiding the fact that, you know, looking for change orders in the future. But I think that's from the both perspectives.
That answers that one. Um, city attorney, are there any legal concerns that we should be worried or concerned about when we didn't complete the service center in twenty eighteen and that went out for a bond and we're moving it over to twenty twenty five bond? Are there any?
As long as the project's a public project and, uh, that's fine. And that happens occasionally in all cities where costs outstrip the bond. And so, that project you either put on hold or moved over and then you're typically kind of refinancing it.
Okay, and I'll try to wrap up real quick so others can ask, ask questions. When will this be due for the first payment? Because I understand it's going for vote in November. That puts us already in fiscal year twenty seven. So if it's approved, I anticipate fiscal year twenty seven is our first payment on this. Is that how it works?
Yes, so he- here's what I'll do, I answer your question. And then I'll ask Mr. Richard Jackson to jump in and stop me if I say something outrageously wrong out of that. So, uh, for those of you who may not know, in another life, I was finance director of different cities. And so, uh, I have, I went through this experience a time or two. And so basically, what happens is that bond payments are done twice a year. Uh, my experience has been February and August. What happens in February is, uh, usually I think it's the interest payment that's made and then in August, it's the principal and interest payment that's made. So, what is happening with this particular bond is that we've already sent information to John Ames as to what we think our debt burden is going to be. And they are going to bill the tax rate based on the information that we give them. Here's what's going to happen. In August of next year, it's gonna be interest payment that's due. But the amount of the proceeds, if everything falls into place, will provide sufficient resources to make that debt service payment in August. That's why we can say there'll be no impact on tax rate in the upcoming year. Not a year after that. Then you cross each bridge as you get to it. But, uh, that's what's gonna happen. And I, I am, I'm a doing.
Doing, you're doing great.
Alrighty.
All right, um, cause I hear utility payment, or utility funds will pay for this. And I also heard utility fund proposed for another exceedance, um, in our preliminary budget. So, do we have enough to cover the exceedances in the preliminary proposed budget and to cover future possible bonds?
That's my understanding, we have the capacity of working with our rating agency, our, our consultant, Richard, if I missed anything there, that we do have that capacity.
Yes.
And what other items were considered and why do we only end up with two?
Well, that's a good question. Let, let me answer for myself. So, twenty eighteen, there was multiple propositions, multiple projects. And so, we now know that it didn't work out the way we thought. And so, I felt rather than trying to do the same thing all over again, why don't we just keep it simple and utilize only two projects? Which, when you go through the community, those two projects have been identified by people that have been informed. These are the two projects that are most important to us. And I say that not to say that any of the other projects were unemployed.
It is priority.
Right, so, you know, in a, in a governmental environment, you can never do everything that you want, so you gotta make choices. So those So those, I, I feel like setting it up in that manner will set the staff up to win and get this done. And, uh, we can get on down the road with some other things.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Good brought up something that, that reminded me, and I appreciate the presentation and everything else. It's gone, it's, uh, and, and I'd, I'd probably lean towards Mr. Bryant because I think he's probably the the senior most person here. The comment was made, no to limited, uh, uh, change orders. And, and so with our fire station, and I know you got on the town, how many change orders did there end up being?
Close to thirty.
Yeah.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven, okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Brock as well. And then, and then also for Daniel Dell. I know, for instance, I know we had a, a water line that, that needed to be moved. And that stuff, and I know that's expensive, but how many change orders were on that?
I don't remember the number, but probably give or take a dozen, probably even more than that honestly, but I don't remember the number of change orders. It was a lot though.
Yeah.
And that, that ended up a couple million dollars over budget.
Right. So I guess it just emphasizes the, the importance of, of why we need to make sure. We have a different staff in here. Uh, I, I think people are more qualified to, to actually run or operate this, so.
And I think to simplify the design build concept, it's, it's generally one firm, one organization that's working together. And like Chad said, they're together throughout the entire process. Designing it conceptual, what's reasonable, what's ethical, what works, and then throughout the construction phase, it's all one group throughout, from start to finish, so when you take one firm that does a design and then you market that design to the world to just build someone else's design, it's just one conflict after another.
And, and I know, I know that, uh, all projects are different, but, but what would you say would be an average or kind of acceptable number of change orders per, per project?
On a general construction project, I mean, they range on, on the complexity of the project, but, you know, I'm used to seeing four or five, you know, not many. Usually that's because, I, I think, for example, I think the last couple of sewer jobs and water jobs we did, there was two or three, and that was because we literally excavated something that we had no idea was there. And even the franchise that owned it didn't know it was there, so, but usually not many.
So if, if I may add here something, I think to the history, um, you know, uh, change orders are not really, you know, we cannot say there will be like one or two or that's ideal yet, there should, in fact, there shouldn't be any change orders if we're, if we're doing it right. Like if we're really estimating things properly, we expect a different, what to expect, we know what to ex- expect and there is good, uh, contract document to back that up, uh, everybody knows what they should be doing, what's on them. There shouldn't be any change orders, but unforeseen conditions happen, and especially in construction, like you come up sometimes into situations where it was not expected, like you're digging the ground and something you didn't know about, but, but in change orders also can be bundled, like it's not the count sometimes too, like there are some things done managed differently in a way, okay, it's gathered, you know, the different unforeseen situations, additional material, additional labor, et cetera, gathered together into one thing that comes to council. Others do it like everything comes to you, for example, smaller pieces, so that is like five change orders versus one, for example. So it really is different however you manage it, but there are multiple factors that can contribute to the reason many change orders happen on previous projects. Uh, now we're doing some other things on the side of the contractual side for Duncanville to, to improve our, our contract document, the rules, the regulations, the, uh, limits. That helps limit also the amount of change order and, you know, the, the room for taking advantage, you know, of coming to you with more. Uh, that helps too, I think, uh, Elton can talk more into what we've been doing on that end to try to help, um, with the future projects, starting with the Cedar Ridge project.
So, yes, we revamped our, um, construction bidding template. So that the contractor has a consistent city of Duncanville terms and conditions. What we were seeing where engineer A would have a different set than engineer B. And, and we, they were getting mixed up with that, so it's just what I've saw in the last couple of years. But you're right, as long as you're not doing CMAR, that's what the fire station was done under, I believe. There were so many change orders with that, it was just outrageous, it was like a Christmas tree. But Matt's right, five to six change orders are generally okay. Most of that stuff, the high dollar ones involved, the geotechnical one, they don't get it right. And you're having to dig the piers and, uh, it's a change in that, or you, you pushed it down too far and when the water came. Uh, especially on the building construction. But, uh, I, I think you're in a good place to, to use either design build or just a traditional one. I know it's the back and the forth with the engineer and the, and the contractor, but if you have a process and control, you can control those change orders and they get a re- a review and approved. Uh, with the design build, um, I, I, I think you need to have a dedicated project manager from the city overseeing that as well. Because it's like the chicken, uh, that fox guarding the chicken house. Uh, and when you got them together, this, this been high.
It makes a question, uh, Matt, do we have a dedicated construction manager or inspector that will be on each one of these jobs?
We, we have project managers and we have various inspectors, but we don't have a, a city engineer at this time. Which is probably more along the lines of where that person will be budgeted.
Well, yeah, what I would, well, what I would recommend in the design building, we talked about with the, um, uh, with the city manager, uh, is that we would wanna hire a construction manager for the city to the most efficient and protect the city's best interest, because as Elton was mentioning, they are the designer and the builder, so if we wanna protect, you know, the city's best interest in looking at the things, in the city's standards and qualities and the material testing and everything, we would need a dedicated, dedicated, uh, team to do that or a, or a we, what's called C M P M. We can do the P M side, uh, with the engineering team available. Uh, but, uh, C M definitely, we're short on that, uh, we, we have one public works dedicated, you know, uh, construction inspector uh, for general projects, you know, so that's not enough, uh, for sure, so, yeah, we would recommend hiring.
So on, as an example, uh, we didn't have that I know, a construction manager on the Daniel Dell project. We had a, we had an engineer overseeing it, but that wasn't.
Yeah, we, we had construction management services through the design firm.
Yeah.
So it was essentially it was outsourced similar to what Chad is talking about.
Well, that sounds like the Fox guarding hen house.
I, I, I would, I would tell you that, uh, just if you, if you saw, um, Cedar Hill built a big library or a big facility over there. They used a dedicated project manager who was experienced in that area. I don't remember what they paid for that service. But they saved more than they would have paid out. And, uh, so I just tell you, if the city of Duncanville is gonna use design build, we need to definitely engage the services of, uh, project managers who are dedicated and know what they're looking for, that they don't get taken advantage of.
Unless there's any other questions, we need to move ahead because we have a, a, um, executive session that was not, not originally scheduled that we gotta fit in before a meeting. So, uh, Mr. Penner Baker, you have a question?
I'll try to make it real quick. Uh, first, Mr. Harvey, thank you, and the committee, y'all met often, and I think y'all put a real good, responsible, thoughtful report, and sort of a report together. Um, the, do we have any idea as far as the timeline? We, assuming it passes, and I've read the funds will be available spring twenty twenty-six. Is there a period in there where we start going out for bids or? Jason Brown, does anyone have any insight on?
I, I may need some help on that, but I've kind of alluded along the way that, uh, this initiative right now is a work in progress. And as it's being executed, it's being executed step by step. I would suggest, and of course, any employee, uh, can, can definitely uh, tell you if I'm saying something outrageously wrong and I invite that. Uh, I, I would say that as we, once you approve, uh, selling bonds and going with this project, then the next few weeks will be developing a timetable in which, one, you can not only sell bonds, but also, two, the construction, design, build, people, and all that kind of stuff. That's gonna unfold as we get closer to. At this point, it really wouldn't make any sense to me to have everything listed out and detailed out and we haven't even agreed to sell bonds yet. So it's kind of a work in progress and they're moving, different moving parts that are moving simultaneously at the same time. And they kind of alluded to that with this conversation that, uh, that they just had between Sahid and the purchasing manager.
Design build process is designed to compress the schedule of any construction project. That's, that's what it's designed to do. It's designed to compress the schedule and make it faster.
And then last, I'll try to put this real quick. Um, so I spoke with Derwin Rotten, who's an architect, you don't know, and he said we're looking at five to six hundred dollars a square foot. So this falls within that at twenty thousand, it's about sixty dollars on the police station. And I've done a little police part of this a little bit more. Decatur in twenty twenty-one had a thirty thousand square foot project at six hundred dollars a square foot, as they were estimating. And it ended up being nine hundred dollars a square foot. And then considering some of the things, tariffs and escalation and pricing and, uh, overruns. Do we have any kind of a cushion as far as built in? Or could we, do we have room to build some, some of a, of a cushion? If we're, you know, if we're looking at a ten million dollar project, we have a two million dollar cushion, but if we're looking at a twelve million dollar project, which we kind of are, do we have room to build in a cushion that works within the budget? Is manageable?
I, I'm gonna ask that question of Chad because it seems like we've approved project, but we included a ten percent COVID over. Is that how that's done?
Are contingency, you mean for previous projects or for this one?
Well, let's take this one for example. So what, what, what protects us from going over the amount that, that we originally agreed to?
Uh, the contingency and typically it really, it, it varies per, uh, per project, but it, it is, um, you know, being conservative is like twenty percent, people do fifteen to twenty percent, ten, ten percent considered a little low. Uh, now, um, and also, you know, accounting for inflation as well. So contingency is something and inflation is another thing, depends on when the project will take place, the sooner the better. That we know is the project kicking off soon, that means the prices are still within the expectation and, and the, and the time of estimation. The, the, the more the project delays, market condition change, prices go up and the project becomes, you know, uh, more difficult to achieve with the same prices. So co- construction estimates might change accordingly and for a long time, we've been estimating a contingency of like two to three percent per year until COVID hit it and things changed, and now it's like minimum five percent per year. That's being considered in analysis, so.
Mr. Penner Baker, can I answer your question?
Yeah, and I, I just, I, I know we're not on the final number necessarily, it's just a proposal, uh, presentation recommendation. But I'd like to make sure we drill down into it a little bit, just to make sure we have a good cushion. That we're not coming back later and trying to buy more money or ask for more money.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you all did. Mr. Hay.
Yes.
We had a request this morning from Councilman Coons, we have an executive session. I see that on our, on our cover sheet for our agenda, we have, uh, the five five one point oh seven one, that this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. Can we go into executive session to satisfy the request of Councilman Coons?
Right now or at the time of the agenda item?
I prefer to do it right now, I'm gonna ask the rest of the council. Once we get into the, the meeting, um, I think it's gonna be hard to take a hard stop and come back into executive session. I know it's gonna take us over the beginning of our meeting, but that, that's gonna be my, my opinion. But it's up to y'all, uh, as a consensus, what do you wanna do? Is you okay with this?
We need to get a certified agenda, someone will have to write one. We need a certified agenda, we have to record it. So if it's not planned out, we need to take care of this.
Now? Okay. So for the rest of you that are here, um, you heard we're gonna go into executive session in a few minutes, thank you very much.
Now, uh, you, on what item? It has to be an agenda item.
Well...
A few adjustments in the doorway there, so bear with us. But at this point, I apologize for the delay in getting out here to this meeting. We did have an executive session that occurred before this, and as a result of that executive session, there's no action to be taken. So I'll now open the meeting for... Sorry, I'll open the meeting for July 15th, Tuesday, July 15th, regular Duncanville City Council meeting at 7:27 PM. And moving along, we'll... We have Pastor Cheryl Stiles with Trinity Church of the Nazarene here for invocation. Stand in, sir.
Shall we pray?
Sure.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather in this room in service to our city of Duncanville. We ask for your guidance to be granted to the members of this council as they deliberate the important issues before them tonight. Grant them clarity of mind, discernment in their decisions, and a spirit of unity as they work together for the common good of our community. May their actions be guided by justice, fairness, and compassion, and may their decisions reflect your will for our community. We pray for the well-being of all of our residents and that our city may prosper under their leadership and your divine guidance. We ask these favors in your precious name, the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledges of the flags.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the Texas flag, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, our next order of business is go into our reports, and on the mayor's report, I'll be brief, although this person, this individual, who was a longstanding member of our community who recently passed away, and we were fortunate enough to attend her funeral, Dorothy Wolverton, otherwise known as Mother Nature to many of you that have been around for a while, had passed away a while back from cancer. She fought a brave battle, but it finally was time for her to go, and she went with a smile on her face, I can tell you. Dorothy was a longtime Lions Club member, president of the Lions Club for some period of time. Mr. Mac Burnett was there then. She was also a DISD trustee for many years, gave a lot to the school and the school kids. And as I said before, she was known as Mother Nature because her and former mayor David Green went out and met with children in all our schools for many years as Mother Nature and recycle man. They dressed up in outfits you wouldn't catch me in, but the kids loved it. They absolutely loved it. They learned a lot about recycling and trash and litter, and it was really beneficial because you're starting at the young ages where it will be influenced to those kids that did get to experience that in understanding the value of recycling and of taking care of your trash properly. So Dorothy will be dearly missed. She was preceded in death by her husband Tommy Wolverton of Wolverton Air Conditioning. They were a long-established business here in Duncanville that served probably many of you, and we'll miss her, so thank you for that. I'll move on to council member reports. Councilman Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to echo, you know, we asked for prayers for Dorothy and God bless her and stuff, but thank you for bringing that, Mayor. But also, I want to talk about the Fourth of July. We had an outstanding event for the Fourth of July. And also, I want everybody to know that this city staff goes through a lot of planning and preparation, after-action plans and everything else, and I've been a part of that, and I really appreciate that. And even, I got to give, you know, commend my cohorts here because they did very well in the parade. Not quite off probation, but you're further along, okay? So thank you for that. But it was outstanding event and with little to no incidents, and I just appreciate what all they did and the production that was done. Also, this upcoming weekend's Duncan Switch, so we have the trade days out there that's happening, and then also a reminder for July 22nd, that's a joint meeting and community block party at the Field House, but it's unveiling of the comprehensive plan, and the three council members to my far left, to your right, did a lot of work to get that done, and it's something for our future. So thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you, Councilman Mac Burnett. Mayor Pro Tim Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City of Champions. It's nice to see you all here tonight. Welcome to our city council meeting. Mayor, I kind of want to give a few compliments. I will start with the Fourth of July event, the planning, the new events planner, Devin, and all of the city staff. What an excellent, wonderful job you did on the Fourth of July. I know that my daughter, my oldest daughter, travels from Everman to come and attend our Fourth of July. She passed up other cities just to come here to the city of Duncanville and bring me my grandchildren, and I can always tell if the event was successful based on how the children are enjoying it, and they loved it. Thank you so much for all the work that you put into it. We had amusement rides, we had a game station, a truck setup for game station, live performances, a ton of opportunities to take pictures, photo booths. So it was an excellent job. Thank you to everyone who participated in putting that event on. I would like to say, recognize Texas Fades Barber Shop. My schedule kind of got a little compact where I had to counsel my haircut appointment with my normal standing barber, and Texas Fades was the only one that I can get in touch with on a Monday afternoon. So they are here in Duncanville, they are on Main, and they did this lovely haircut I have tonight. So if you haven't been and you're looking for a barber shop, Texas Fade has helped me, and also Big Mikes, they've been able to stand in and cover me a time or two. So those are two that, if you need a barber shop, consider them. They're here in Duncanville. And last but not least, thank you to Chella. Chella, you provided our meals for tonight for council, and you recently opened on Main as well. And if you haven't had a chance to go by, City of Champions, please go by. I think you will enjoy the restaurant. It's a nice ambiance, it's a nice setup there, and they serve, it's like a bistro. So if you haven't had an opportunity to go by, they are... Do we know the exact address, anybody? 1115?
1117.
South Main. So go and give them a try, and it's spelled X-E-L-A. Thank you. Have a good night.
Before I move on to the mayor's or the city manager's report, I'll be remiss if I don't... Ms. Gooden reminded us that her daughter came down from Everman, and so did her grandchildren, and there's quite a few of them. My wife was riding in another vehicle. My wife had to ride in another vehicle, so I was on a six-man golf cart by myself with two bags of candy. I wasn't going to do very good at that. She loaned me two of her grandsons. First one got on board, we introduced, and it sounded good. Second one got on board, and I said, "What's your name?" And he says, "Zion." And I said, "Okay, Zion, good to meet you." And he said, "Sometimes I'm good, and sometimes I'm not." And I can't tell you why. And he did good, though. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I'm sorry, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, just on the city manager's report, just kind of echoing what Mayor Pro Tim Gooden said, and the mayor, we just do want to thank staff, the Lions Club, everybody that was involved in the Fourth of July event. It was a real success, and we really appreciate everybody's hard work and effort. Last Thursday, July 10th, we had a Coffee with a Cop event. It really turned out well, had a good attendance. We want to thank all those that attended, and also just thank the police department for a job well done on that event. I did want to send kudos to the Public Works Department. Last week, we did have some storms. We didn't really have a lot of trees or down debris, but there was about three isolated situations where there were some, and they quickly picked that up, so we thank them for their quick effort in taking care of that. Another interesting tidbit, if you recall, we did hire a company, Astera, to do some satellite imaging to identify leaks in our water system throughout the city, and amazingly, we have identified 79 leaks so far. We've repaired three, and our utilities team is diligently working to address all those leaks, so we really are appreciative of that technology to help identify those and really improve our water system for the citizens. And just as a quick reminder, we do have the comprehensive plan on July, meeting on July 22nd at 6:00 PM, and then staff is diligently working to present the budget to the city council at the workshop on July 29th. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to proclamations and presentations. A proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month. And Mr. Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation and Staff. You mind reading it?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bart Stevenson. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation, and I have the honor of standing before you to thank all the men and women of the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Duncanville. Some of them are here represented behind me. I can't tell you how hard these folks work, how dedicated they are to their jobs in making sure our citizens have the best parks and the best opportunities for recreation and leisure at the recreation center as well as our senior center. So thank you, guys. So proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Duncanville, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate out... The House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Duncanville recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, Greg Contreras, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, to hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you.[1786.97][1786.97][applause] Thank you.
I might add that there's a lot more people that are involved in this department that do all the work preparing fields, preparing the grass and keeping the flowers nice and doing so many things. So, when you go to our parks and you look out and you see how beautifully they're kept, just remember these folks and all the others that weren't here tonight. Okay, we're going to move on now to item three, citizens' input. Now, this is a session where we'll have citizens' input for two minutes. And we cannot respond to the person that is going to speak in this session. I will tell you that we have a number of cards that were submitted. But if a card was submitted for either one of the public hearings this afternoon, public hearing for 615 Cockrell Hill or public hearing for 1600 South Cockrell Hill, those cards are being moved towards that agenda item. So, your turn to speak will be during that public hearing. So, that being said, have we received, City Secretary, have we received any other electronic submittals? Okay. So, we have received five submittals. We have received five submittals electronically. Those will be read during that public, or those will be put on the record for those respective public hearing events that they're assigned to by whoever filled them out. They either put 5B or 5C. And other than that, we only have one card to speak outside of those public hearings and that's Barbara Owens. Do you care to speak? We're ready. Backyard of neighbor, is that what it is? Come on up. Name and address, please.
Barbara, last name Owens. I'm at 1526 Natalie Lane. I've been there for, I think about since 2014. I'm here tonight because I thought I was doing the right thing by coming down to City Hall and trying to talk to the code department. But I came down on June the 11th and the nice lady at the front gave me a code card with the name of Ernest, last name L-A-N-A-S on it. She said that they were in court and that he would give me a call. Well, I gave him a call and left a message. He didn't get back with me, so I called him the next day. And when I spoke to him, he told me, he said, "Ma'am," he said, "you have to do it on the computer." I said, "I'm 75 years old. I don't have a computer." "I'm calling you to tell you what's going on." Anyway, no call back. And so, I came back again last week on July 8th asking the same thing because I have a neighbor that's a hoarder. And I've put with it over and over and over and over again. I get out in my yard. I work from sunup to sundown when I'm not working. I take pride in my yard. And I'm tired of every time I go out and let my garage up, here are these two big huge boats with tarps on them. The fence is warped and the fence goes all the way around. Some kind of way, he went and found a torque that goes from all the way one end to the other end. And I'm tired. And so, I can't get no help from anybody. Only thing I know to do is move because I'm tired. They won't keep the yard up. And so, who else is it to call if you don't sit up and try to get in touch with? And I spoke to Ernest and I told him that I'm speaking to you. And so, maybe somebody can get in touch with me and help me because I'm tired. I'm tired.
We will.
I shouldn't have to live like that. I mean, the boats are humongous. This weekend, it was two in the backyard, one in the driveway and one in the garage.
We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Being that is the rest of our business for citizen input, we'll move on to item four, consent agenda. All right. We went over some of this during our meeting, during our briefing session. So, has everybody had a chance to look over it? Any questions? Any motions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Gooden. Please vote. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to item five, items for individual consideration. I've already mentioned that there's no action to be taken as a result of executive session, item A. Item B, conduct a public hearing for consideration of action regarding the request of Keaton Mall applicant for a specific use permit for the use of fuel pumps. And I'll just go down to the address. It's 615 South Cockrell Hill Road, Duncanville.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Brendan Kane. I am a lead planner with Olson. We have been contracted to support your planning, planning and zoning department through.
Sir, could you raise your microphone up? More audible.
Can you hear me now? Okay. My name is Brendan Kane. I'm a lead planner with Olson and here to support the planning department this evening. Let's see here. All right. The first, tonight, as the mayor mentioned, we're having a public hearing for 615 South Cockrell Hill. The applicants, the application that's in front of you is requesting to redevelop the subject property as a fueling station with the retail convenience stores, the primary use and fuel pumps as an accessory use. Currently, right now, the proposed site plan that is provided, the retail use isn't as of right use. But because the applicant is requesting fuel pumps within your zoning ordinance according to section 3.03, it does require a specific use permit in order to permit the fuel pumps on the property. So, the application that is in front of you this evening is for an SUP, for, to allow for fuel pumps as an accessory or incidental use on the property to support the main retail facility that the applicant is proposing. Your future land use map designation is identified as opportunity area number one. That is with your current comprehensive plan. Obviously, we are aware that, you know, you are about to adopt a new comprehensive plan, but we are going off of what is there right now. And so, opportunity area number one really identifies this corner and this area as for high-quality interstate or highway commercial development along Highway 67. Retail commercial development, you know, either standalone or as a mixed-use development at Wheatland Road and Cockrell Hill, which is the property that we are speaking of. And also, for this area within opportunity area number one, the support for medium or higher density residential development, either standalone as part of a mixed-use development, are the different types of uses that were identified in your comprehensive plan for this property. The current zoning on the property is local office and retail district. Here's just an aerial photo that we have for the property to kind of show the, what is surrounding your area. There is, again, commercial properties to the south. To the north, you have an existing convenience and gas station facility as well. And then to the east, you have multifamily development. As I mentioned, from a zoning perspective, this is zoned local area retail. And then you can see the surrounding uses that are as part of your zoning map as well. This is the proposed site plan that has been provided to us. This is really just for your benefit to understand how the property could be developed in the future. The convenience store is going to be located on the southwest corner of the property. The fuel pump canopy is going to be more closer to the intersection of Wheatland Road and South Cockrell Hill Road. These are some proposed elevations that have been provided to us. This application was in front of the plant, plant commission previously, prior to us or Olson being brought on board last year. The applicant actually withdrew the application after the plant commission meeting because there was a recommendation of denial and there was some conversation. They came back forward with the revised site plan that you see here and revised elevations that are in front of you. Again, we are focused specifically on the fuel pumps this evening as the specific use permit for the property. Within your zoning code and your zoning ordinance, in order to consider a specific use permit, there are about nine different criteria elements that should be considered as part of this. I'm not going to read through all these, but again, is the project, you know, consistent and compatible with the adjacent land uses and zoning? You know, is the development, you know, consistent with architecture and the characteristics of the area? Is there, you know, will be detrimental to the general health, safety and welfare of the community? Does it stabilize the property values within the area? Are some of the considerations that the city council should consider as part of this SUP application? We did hold, at the planning and zoning commission meeting, we did hold a public hearing on June 9th, 2025. We are required to notify property owners within 200 feet of the property of this application. There were 25 notifications that were sent out to the community. We did not receive any responses in favor or opposition. The same amount of notifications were sent out for the city council public hearing this evening and we did not receive any responses in favor or opposition either. At the planning and zoning commission meeting, there was a recommendation for approval, again, specifically for the fuel pumps on the property. However, there was a recommendation for approval with a 10-year approval period for it. That motion did fail, two to four. And I wanted to just bring up for the benefit of the city council, within your ordinance, you can place time periods on specific use permits. And that is one, as you saw on the previous slide, what was the recommendation of the plant commission. However, again, we just wanted to highlight as part of this, you can place time periods on specific use permits, but usually that is for more temporary type of uses that, or they're not making significant investment into the property. So, just wanted to bring that to the city council's attention as well as part of your evaluation this evening for the application. You have four options to consider this evening as part of this application. You can approve the specific use permit as submitted. You could approve it with conditions if you feel that there are elements that need to ensure compliance or compatibility. And you can also then direct the staff to, and the city attorney to prepare the appropriate ordinance. You may deny the application or the specific use permit, but please state the reasons why, or you can table it to a future city council meeting. Any questions?
Okay. What we're going to do now is we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And if we have any questions, we'll get right back to you.
Mayor, would you like a motion?
Yes.
For the, make the motion to open the public hearing.
Okay. Motion to open the public hearing by Councilman Mac Burnett. Second by Councilman Cherry Brown. Please vote. Okay. So, with that, the first thing I'll do is I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this, of this request. Is there anyone additionally? Can I have gentleman, Mr. Cooks, come forward?
Good evening, council. Mark Cooks, 1106 Bradley Drive, Duncanville, Texas. I'm going to speak in favor of the station on Cockrell Hill and Wheatland. And the reason I'm going to speak in favor of that station is I know that we talked about not having so many stations here in Duncanville. But being on the best southwest board, and many of you are much aware of that, what is missing in our cities for best, for our gas station is electronic charging stations. We're not talking about charging stations, one. We're talking charging station two and three, which is the high-level charging station for electronic vehicles. And with our economy moving to more electronic vehicles, what more vehicle that you could use than to bring a charging station here in Duncanville, other than Costco, right there on the corner, that could also bring different types of vehicle to us? I think the challenge in not having that charging station or another station there, right beside it years ago was a Callaways. And when I said there were used setting, we turned down an opportunity to make that Callaways another business. And the first thing that owner did was to make it a beauty supply facility. I'm not asking you to just take on anything. But when you think about CVS, the building on the corner and all of the, all of the things you're going to do to that, to the building and our entryway, I'm asking you to consider making that the gas station, and not only the gas station, but the amenities that come with it, with the caveat of making sure charging stations level two and three is a part of that approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? I see none. I'll move on to those in opposed. And I'll start by the cards that have been turned in to me. I do have one that's in opposition. They do not wish to speak. I have actually two that are in opposition and they don't care to speak tonight. So, with that, I'll name, I'll call out Amy Robledo.
Hi, my name is Amy Robledo. I live at 911 Eisenhower Drive here in the great city of Duncanville. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to ask, I am here tonight to ask you to vote against this proposed gas station. This area is already full of gas stations. We simply don't need another one. It does not reflect our long-term vision for the city. What our city truly needs are developments that add value to us, like a restaurant or a shop that would serve our community far better and help shape the kind of future we all want to see. The gas station proposal does not align with our city's potential. We deserve better. Let's invest in something that brings growth, not just more of what we already have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Zilka, Greg Zilka?
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you and mayor for your service to our community. I would be against this SUP for a couple of reasons. I think that the area is very congested and there's a lot of traffic flowing through there. To add another gas station across the street, to me, adds a safety factor that I don't think is appropriate for that area. I think that the area, while I would love to see it developed, just with something else that would promote someone to be there longer to participate with the business that's there versus a very high-frequency, quick sale, turnover. And that's what these stores are geared towards. High frequency and just get them in and out. And that, to me, increases traffic flow. That intersection is notorious for situations over there. I just feel it's a safety issue to put another gas station across the street. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Okay. So, that ends the cards that were put in to make comments. Do I now have those opposed that did not fill out cards?
Do I need to give my name and address? Emily Bridges, 418 Oleander, 75137. So, first, I want to start by recognizing the council for the great work that you've done in our city, particularly with the new arts commission and the cultural district. And there's some new businesses floating around that makes me very happy and the upcoming, the upcoming comprehensive plan that y'all have worked so hard for. I'm excited to see it. Your efforts are truly appreciated and don't go unnoticed. However, I am here to express my opposition to the proposed special use permit for a gas station in the old CBS building. We already have two large gas stations within a city block and they remain dirty. It's not a good look in one of our main thoroughfares. A recent study identified convenience stores with gas stations as the second industry that negatively impacts property values. And I genuinely believe that this proposal will not add any value to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the gas station? Yes.
Sarah Coontz, 226 Creekwood Court, Duncanville, Texas. I am opposed to another gas station. I don't see how it improves the area that we live in. It's within walking distance of our house and we already have those two main gas stations. I would love for maybe something healthy to go there, some like healthier restaurant, some. some maybe like a food market, or just something different to draw people in because we, we do have lots of gas stations. So I think there's ways that we can be creative and just bring something new and fresh. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Browning.
Erica Browning, four four two East Cherry Street. I just wanted to clarify that the planning and zoning commission, a motion was made to approve, which failed. The planning and zoning commission did not recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up for questions, and I want to go ahead and begin by asking a question. Are any representatives from Murphy here tonight?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Tucker. I work for Murphy USA as a real estate manager. My address is thirteen twenty one Berkshire, zip code seven five zero seven eight. I just wanted to say thanks for the time, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have. We have our civil engineer here, Keaton Mye with the Dimension Group that can answer more technical questions than I can, but I'm happy to answer any questions based on our.
Okay, just wanted to know you're here. Thank you.
We are here.
With that, I have a question. Oh, okay. Now, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Mac Burnett, second by Councilman Coontz. Please vote. Thank you for the reminder. Okay. Councilwoman Cherry Brown.
Thank you, Ben. My question is, because I am electric car owner, so is there a plan to put electric pumps there?
Not currently, but we're certainly open to it. It's somewhat of a new technology for us. We don't have a tremendous amount of them, but we are working on a couple of projects where we're going to be putting them in, so we are certainly open to adding E V to the site.
Thanks. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Coontz.
Thank you, mayor. So, you know, I really hadn't thought much about the electric vehicles and the charging stations, so that's really something we should be considering. But we have fuel pumps on our agenda for, for tonight, so, and I think that, we think of fuel pumps, we think of gas stations. And as, as was stated, there's actually one, two, three, four gas stations within a mile of each other already in, on that stretch of Cockrell Hill, so there is quite a bit of redundancy there. And we do recognize that we don't have, as a city, control over what the property owner does with the property. If they have a right to do it, they, they can do what they would like, but as far as us having an opportunity to, there, there are some things happening on Cockrell Hill on that stretch. We do have some development that is, I believe, moving us closer to making that area more of a, a nicer gateway to the city, which I believe is kind of the vision for that area. And the fuel pumps seem to be, or the gas station seems to be a step backwards away from that, so, thank you.
Okay, and we'll call you back up if we have any more questions for you. Mr. Kane, if you wouldn't mind? Just for clarification, and I did read through the packet, but the P and Z, as Ms. Browning said, did not approve the, the gas station, not the pumps, but they, they denied.
They made, they made a recommendation to approve, or they made a recommendation to the city council for approval of the, the fuel pumps. But that motion failed.
Right.
The convenience store is an as of right use on the property, so they could come through the, the normal site planning process, receive approval through the D R C, and then get a building permit for the convenience retail portion of it. What you are reviewing this evening is specifically for the specific, or, excuse me, what you were reviewing this evening is for the fuel pumps, because again, according to your zoning ordinance, that requires a specific use permit.
Okay, and so in essence, the, the building itself without the fuel pumps can be thereby right.
That is correct, sir.
That's correct. And I guess the question would go back to the representatives from Murphy, that do they build just structures for convenience stores without the gas station? Okay. Any other questions, council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion if that's the case.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve with conditions, and it's the conditions that were provided, ten year period.
Motion to approve the request for fuel pumps with conditions for ten years. Just a straight majority? Okay, I'm sorry, it was Councilwoman, Councilwoman, or Mayor Pro Tem Gooden asked the question if it required a super majority the way the, the, the motion was made.
Yes, they would have to overrule deny it would require six to seven.
Okay. Everybody understand? Okay, if no further question, I would ask you to go ahead and vote.
Wasn't even closed, was it?
Unanimous. All right, thank you.
Has a question real quick.
Got a question down there?
I don't, no.
No, okay. Okay, well, the motion failed.
I can count to seven, yeah. If it were eight, I couldn't count that high, but I can get to seven.
All right, we'll move on to the next case. Item five C. Conduct a public hearing from sixteen hundred South Cockrell Hill, also known as Life Charter School.
Yeah, mayor, I, I would kind of interrupt you at this point for this agenda item, just because the public notoriety of this case in our community, and the fact that probably ninety nine point nine percent of the people that are here are here about this item. I would ask you to go ahead and entertain a motion from the council to suspend the regular rules as it applies to public hearings. And I think that you've got some idea that impose fifteen minutes for each of the applicants, one hour for those in favor, one hour for those against, to, to speak with us tonight. So I would entertain to you to see if the council would be willing to do that, to allow as many people to speak on this issue as possible.
Okay, so what you're explaining is we're going to suspend, we're going to vote to suspend the rule that normally would give us ten minutes for those in favor and five minutes for those opposed. But given the number of people that have not only signed up to speak, but also those that may want to speak on this item without having signed up, we're going to consider suspending the rule to where the presenters for this item will have fifteen minutes to present. At the end of that presentation, we'll go into a public hearing, and then we will give the, those that are in favor and those that are in opposition a cumulative amount of time in, in one hour. So we're going to limit each person speaking to two minutes. Now, the oddity in this procedure is that unlike the two minute session that preceded this with the one or two speakers, we cannot comment back. In this case right here, if a council member hears you speak in your two minutes, and they have a question that they want to bring back up to you during the public hearing, they, they will be able to address a concern about your question or your comment. So just keep that in mind. You're limited to two minutes of speaking time, but you may be called on to answer questions about your specific question or concern that you stated during your time. Okay, so we all clear on this?
So mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we suspend our rules.
Okay. Councilman Mac Burnett has requested, or made a motion to suspend the rule according to what I just explained to y'all. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Coontz. Please vote.
And city attorney, so are we going to allow time for rebuttal as well?
Well, if, by whom? The applicant or staff or?
So normally we have ten for, ten against, and then five for rebuttal, so we're going to allow?
I'm not running a meeting if the mayor wants to allow it, but I, I think it's cleaner if it's for and again, and we're done. But I don't run the meeting.
Do we want to allow for rebuttal, so if someone says something in favor and someone wants to respond?
Well, let's, let's do, let's do this part of business first. Let's go ahead. Well, no, let's go ahead and address that.
I mean, I, mayor.
Is everybody clear on what Mr. Coontz is asking? We had prepared to allow a presentation by the representatives from Life School, a fifteen minute presentation. And the question on the table now is, we're going to allow fifteen minute rebuttal by those that are opposed. So I'll ask the council to give.
What do you mean by those opposed? Do you mean the citizens to come back up here? I don't want citizens arguing with one another. They need to address the council, not each other.
Let's get clarification from Councilman Coontz on who, who would be the person that would be representing any group in opposition.
So typically, our procedure for public hearings is we allow ten minutes, and the aggregate four, and then ten minutes against, and then we allow five minutes of rebuttal on both sides as well. So if someone gets up and speaks in favor, and then someone says they want to respond to that, and then vice versa.
They're here to address you, not each other. So if you ask them a question, bring them back up here and have them answer the question, but I don't want the citizens arguing with each other. They need to be addressing you, telling you why they're in favor, why they're against, not arguing with one another. I mean, if, for example, if some citizen gets up and says something either in favor or against, and you want to ask them questions from, because you've heard everyone comment, say, hey, A said this, B said this, what I want to know from you is why did you say what you said? Or why, tell me why A isn't correct. But I don't want them arguing with one another, and then making a decision. You guys run the meeting, not vice versa.
With that, to, in order to address Mr. Coontz's desire, does it take a consensus or a vote up here?
Making a motion that he wants to impose that rule, then.
Okay, at, at Councilman Coontz's request, we're going to move on. And remember that we are looking at an hour, cumulative hour for each side, and that will be made up of individuals speaking for two minutes at a time. And if we get to an hour point, it looks like we've got a small enough group in here that probably may not, may not need the full hour, but we'll, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Okay, so at this point, I need a motion to open the public hearing. Clarification on whether we're going to open the public hearing or hear the presentation first.
Open the public hearing and get both the presentations in the public hearing in the record.
Okay. Motion to open the.
Mayor, I'd like to make that motion that we.
Motion by, motion to open the public hearing by Councilman Mac Burnett.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Gooden. Please vote. Thank you.
So for clarification, mayor, we'll.
All right. Presentation?
All right. Good evening, mayor, council member, staff. Again, Brendan Kane with Olson making the presentation this evening. In front of you this evening is an application for a planned development. The applicant is intending to develop an educational facility for a public charter school that will include a middle school, a high school, associated parking, and infrastructure, athletic facilities, and including, including the stadium. According to your zoning code, section three point zero three, in order to permit an educational facility within an S F thirteen, single family residential district, with review and approval of a specific use permit. However, as the applicant, you know, and has been going through the process and working with the, with the city and the staff, has requested a planned development for this application. That is, that is what is in front of you this evening, because it was determined to be a more appropriate path forward, and I'll get into that process here in, in a little bit for the project. But again, the request is a zoning change to allow for the development of a educational facility, again, life school, public charter school. The future land use map designation, the property is currently identified as future or low density residential. The current zoning district is S F thirteen. And again, the proposed zoning district that's in front of you this evening is for a planned development. The project scope that is, that'll be, that is being presented is for phase one, which will include a high school with the associated parking and stadium. The initial stadium capacity of the stadium is going to be fifteen hundred, but the maximum capacity is going to be three thousand at, at full buildout. Phase two of the project would include a middle school with additional parking and drive infrastructure to support that additional development on the property. Some of the key development parameters that are being proposed as part of this planned development, the maximum floor area for the project is around three hundred and fifty five thousand square feet total building between the high school and the middle school. The maximum building house be, building height is being proposed at thirty six feet, with limited exceptions for clear stories, and then also the stadium press box that'll be a part of the proposed stadium. The stadium lighting permitted without height restrictions within your zoning code right now, you only have requirements for parking lot lighting. And again, as part of this review process that has gone through, because of this proposed stadium and the lighting that's going to be needed for that facility, there's consideration to put that into the P D to help ensure that there is the appropriate standards in place for cutoff provisions, so it doesn't spill out onto the other properties and, and other measures as well. Along with parking, customized ratios for the parking for the middle school and the high school along with the stadium. Additional parameters as part of the P D, they are looking at some additional landscaping modifications. You have a pretty significant tree preservation ordinance here within your community. I think many of you are aware of the property that is, as it sits today, it's about a hundred acres in total, has a lot of topography on it, it has a lot of existing woodland on there as well. The applicant has cited, and they'll present as part of their presentation, why they've located the building where it is and, and the facilities where they're at. But as part of the P D application, most of the tree canopy is intended to stay, but again, because of the rigorous landscape requirements that are currently part of your ordinance, they've asked for some relief from the landscaping requirements because of maintaining the natural character and canopy that's out there today. Screening and buffering requirements, you have requirements in there right now. They are proposing an eight foot precast concrete wall between the, the proposed, or between the facilities and the residential area. Along with fencing as well, there are some parameters as part of the project. With fencing, that is going to be in front of the building closer to the public road, and so they're asking for some additional relief on that to apply with T E A safety standards as part of that. And then the exterior design standards as well, they're being asked to be modified to allow eighty percent masonry coverage in lieu of articulation requirements due to safety and functional considerations. As I mentioned, the reason why we're here this evening for, for the planned development, as I started my presentation, within your city ordinances, schools can be cited in pretty much any zoning district you have, as long as it is a specific use permit. Olson was, as part of this application, an application was made last year in March or April of last year, had gone through multiple reviews internally with the city. Olson was engaged in around November of two thousand and twenty four to do an independent zoning or, or a zoning audit of the proposed development to review whether or not a P D was going to be required as part of that application. If, again, the specific use permit would allow the property and the buildings to be cited as is very similar to other projects, but because of some of the requirements from the the development standards that are within the zoning district that you have there today, they wouldn't be able to meet some of those standards or exceeding some of those standards. If you were to permit the, the school as a specific use permit, they would still be required to come back in front of the zoning board of adjustment for around five to seven different variances is what we identified as part of that independent zoning audit, and therefore, that is why. And therefore, that is why the, the request was made by the applicant to pursue the planned development, to be able to consolidate all of those variance requests into one application that would be, that's in front of you this evening for consideration. But also to take in a lot of the feedback that has been gathered through this planning process. There have been, as you are aware, since last year, there have been open houses, there's been multiple public meetings in front of the plan commission as well. So that is why we're here this evening and why you see a PD in front of you. Subject property, again, it is about a hundred acres in total outlined in yellow. You do have the city of DeSoto that is on your boundary to the, to the east, a little bit here. But again, it is on the, on the southeast corner of Daniel Dale Road and Cockrell Hill Road. And as I mentioned, the applicant is here, will be making a presentation, but it is a pretty hilly property. There's a lot of topography there as part of it. And again, reasons why they are citing the building where it's being located. As I mentioned, the property is owned SF thirteen with a single-family zoning district right now. You can see the adjacent and surrounding area as well. It is pretty much residential. There are some existing planned developments on the residential side, which are to the north and to the east of your property as well. I won't go into much detail on this project. Again, the applicant is here to really present their overall site or proposed site plan. But this is the latest addition that does take into consideration. Site plan reviews that have been conducted by staff along with outside consultants, Walter P. Moore has evaluated the civil engineering drawings, at least on a conceptual basis to understand how the property would drain and how it could be developed over time as part of the development. I do want to touch on here a little bit as relates to the traffic management and improvements that are being proposed as part of this project. The applicant at their expense and the request by the city had a third-party review, the traffic impact analysis that was prepared for this project and the traffic management plan that was prepared back in October and November. There, the traffic management plan is a requirement and is part of the PD application. Again, the traffic management plan does support how traffic is gonna be handled for a high school and the, and the future middle school area as well. So there are standards that are being in, are set in place there as part of that, but that is part of the PD that if the city council were to choose to move this application forward with an approval, would be considered and would be written into the PD that it is, the, the standards and the, and the requirements outlined in that traffic management plan would be a requirement of the ordinance as part of that. That was one independent review. Walter P. Moore was also retained to complete another independent review of the TIA and TMP and concluded as part of their analysis as well, along with the drainage and site access and circulation, that the project being proposed does conform and does meet the standards as, as relates to traffic standards along with your engineering standards for the site as well. The, within your packets and also the reviews that do, it does conclude that the mitigation factors that Life School is willing to take on as part of their overall construction project met or exceeded your current level of standards that are out there for your public roads. The traffic mitigation items that are being proposed as part of this do include some signals for the property, short-term and long-term for the project. It does include additional turn lanes on both Daniel Dale and Cockrell Hill Road. I'll let the applicant go into more details relates to those traffic mitigation. But that comes at an expense of around three million that the applicant is willing to take on as part of this project as well. And additionally, as part of the TA, TIA that was conducted and at the request of the city to expand that TIA as part of the, the process, there were some additional options, I would say, or additional recommendations for improvements at, at Highway sixty-seven and Cockrell Hill Road that the applicant, it's not proposed at this time, but has stated, you know, as part of their planning application, willing to consider those additional improvements in well, that is more or less striping requirements to potentially propose for, for two lanes. That will require some additional coordination with tax dot because obviously Highway sixty-seven is a tax dot road, but that option is out there as well. From a procedural standpoint, a public hearing was held on May twelfth, twenty twenty-five and continued on June ninth, twenty twenty-five in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This application at the request and what was from city leadership and I believe a commitment from the council as well, we exceeded or went outside the, the, the regular two-hundred-foot notification notified property owners within a thousand feet of the property that occurred for the May twelfth public hearing and also the June ninth public hearing and the public hearing that's in front of you this evening as well. At the time of preparation for this PowerPoint in front of you this evening, we had sent out, again, five hundred and sixty-one notifications three times. We have received back a hundred and eighty-two responses in favor and a hundred and five responses in opposition. I want to state that as individual, you know, there are multiple people that, or there are individuals that have submitted multiple times, but these are just one vote per person. But this was as of last week, Thursday, when we put the PowerPoint together. We do have some additional information that I think will be handed out to the council this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a, a recommendation to deny the proposed planned development for the construction operation of a public charter school. And that motion passed five to one on June ninth, twenty twenty-five. The, uh, city council options for consideration this evening that are in front of you, once you close the public hearing are to, option number one is to approve the planned development as submitted. Approve the, the planned development with conditions as you go through this process this evening. If there are additional requirements that the city council, you know, identifies through the, the public input, within your packet is the proposed PD and the requirements that are in there as well. Again, the applicants here can go through those specifically. But that, that also is part of, if there is a, a recommendation for an approval, would be written into the PD as part of your ordinance and would become as part of the official documents as part of it. If you choose to deny this application this evening, again, we ask that you identify, you know, the reasons for denial for that application. Or you may table it to a future, should say, city council meeting, and I apologize, the planning and zoning meeting, but a future city council meeting. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Hi, my name is Brian Nelson, principal with HKS Architects in Dallas. I'm gonna go through this with the time constraints here. I know all of you have had this packet. I just wanted to highlight some particular items that have come up and walk through the plans a little bit. So some really quick facts, Life School is a public charter school. Public schools are open enrollment, including for special needs. They're funded, including construction by tax dollars. There's two phases planned, one high school of twelve hundred students. Phase two is eight hundred students for middle school. There's seven hundred and ninety spaces. On their thing, full buildout, ten thousand linear feet of car queuing, multiple traffic improvements that not only will reduce our mitigation at school pickup and drop-off, but will also improve the community traffic at the intersection of Daniel Dale and Cockrell Hill. A thousand-seat gym and a fifteen hundred bleachers for phase one. Here's a site plan of our thing. A couple of things to note. One of the things that was talked about earlier tonight is the benefit of nature and that for students and children and adults and everything else. So one of the ways that this is laid out is that the school, schools are against the wooded area that we're keeping almost all of the heavily wooded area in there except for our driveway to come through. So as kids come through in the morning, they're gonna come through a wooded area and have nature all around them. And then over half of the classrooms face the nature is why this is situated there. And then the stadium is, or the athletic venue is on the east side where it's, and there's some site reasons for that. It is flatter. And then also, that's unknown by this plan is there is a sewer line that cannot be redone. And because it is not able to be lowered even at the manhole out in the street or the street sewer, and there's only one direction for that. So that's setting kind of the limits of how far down the hill the stadium for any restrooms or anything, or the high school can go on the field. So it's really setting this where it is. One thing also I'd like to point out, the height of the building is at thirty-six feet. He mentioned the stadium. The top of the press box as currently drawn is at twenty-seven feet. We have it to be a maximum of thirty-six. So nothing on the site will go above thirty-six feet. And I'd like to point out that the top of the roof peak of the house in the corner shown on this diagram is thirty-five feet. So we are not exceeding the neighborhood house, houses, top of roof elements along the north side here. I just wanted to point that out of our fit within the neighborhood and heights. This is the athletic area. We are doing lighting, which I will show you later. Enhanced lighting with six poles, usually there's four, some higher poles so that there will be a lot less spill out of this area into the surrounding neighborhood. One thing to mention on the height, if we're gonna compare this athletic field to Duncanville High School Stadium, their top of press box is seventy-one feet, we're at twenty-seven feet, just so we're kind of, people don't confuse that this is a giant stadium. It's a, it's a small little bleachers and field and, and turf. One of the other reasons here of why everything is cited where it is, you can see the dramatic grade changes throughout the site. And so to be conscious of, A, all the trees and just not destroying the land and the nature and what is existing or causing flood issues is why the project is cited where it is. One thing I would also like to point out is that our drainage is actually reducing the current, which is undeveloped land, is going to reduce the runoff to the east, even in our developed condition from what it is undeveloped. So we're improving the drainage for this area into a retention pond before it goes into the creek. Our traffic queuing plan, I'd like to point out, one thing, I know some other schools in the area have some issues with queuing. This was measured, it's under lots of studies about how much queuing it takes. They went and measured their Waksahatchee site. This is a brand-new developed thing that has more than enough car queuing. And even what is shown, there is extra already available on site if there were to be any issues through the parking lot. So that is already built into this for car queuing. We do not feel in any way that there will be an issue with car queuing because it's being designed from the beginning with the number of students, unlike some other schools in the area that we know have had issues. A couple, a few things on our traffic, I wanted to just point out. We are doing turn lanes at, and a new traffic signal at our entrance. And then for the middle school, phase two, we'll have another traffic light that will help the neighborhood to the north get out of their neighborhood when that comes online. And then the items that we are doing that will help the community, even when the school is not there, but is also a mitigation of us, is we are extending the left turn lane at Daniel Dale. And then we are doing the right turn lane, a new right turn lane and stacking at Cockrell Hill to go to Daniel Dale. So that will improve the traffic flow, and then we're doing right protected arrows also. So this is part of our mitigation that's required and been approved by two different reviewers and a traffic engineer. But it is also going to improve and fits within the regulations and is also going to improve the overall traffic day-to-day for the community. Here's a lighting diagram I wanted to show you of the athletic venue lighting. We are meeting the requirements of, I believe the city requirements is two, is one foot candle at the property lines. We are at point zero one foot candles at the, at the east property, which is actually the city of DeSoto. And we are almost three hundred feet from the north property lines of point zero foot candles. Point zero foot candle is a full moon. So no actual light, physical light from the stadium is going to reach any of the neighbors other than a very, very small amount to the east DeSoto neighbors. So, and this is designed by higher poles and more poles to direct the light straight down to improve the area or to not have more light spill, also into nature or anything else. Here's our plan. We've went over, there's a diagram of what we're doing for our masonry walls and the buffer behind there. We're gonna have a eight-foot masonry with a fifteen-foot buffer. We're gonna plant trees. And we are more than happy to arrange those trees to be planted behind the neighbors as they would wish, however, by their windows or whatever else. I, I do want to point out, the code only requires a vegetative buffer. So we could have just planted just trees for a vegetative buffer. But we're going above and beyond and doing an eight-foot masonry wall all the way along the north and the east property lines. This is a very small thing, but it's about the building articulation that's in the code is a safety factor because it create, makes you have three-foot offsets, which highly limits the visibility of students and staff around the edge of the building. You'd have to have multiple, multiple cameras and other things. So we're proposing to do eighty percent masonry, which is not in the code to offset this. And then the height articulation that's in the code, we're just trying to avoid making the building any higher than it is since it's so offset from the road. Then this is another thing that I wanted to definitely point out. There's been some talk about the benefits of the school to the community. This is in your packet, our economic study that we had done. So one of the big things about quality schools, there's lots of studies of quality schools can raise property values up to ten percent. There's also the construction cost of this, all the people who will be coming like, okay, we're gonna get a Starbucks after school. We're gonna eat breakfast before school. We're coming to an event. We're going to go to a restaurant. We're gonna stop at the convenience store. We're gonna shop because it's on our way to school. All of those things come there. I do want to say our study applies while ten percent is available for high-quality schools. We, this study only assumed two percent. And with that, are these numbers for a ten-year benefit? Our direct cost of construction and that for, and operations is thirty million over ten years, eighty-six million for operations. Indirect is people who support those things is five million and forty-two million. Induced is people shopping and other things and even people moving into the community because of good schools. All of these in a ten-year period would result in almost eight hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue and seven point four million dollars in residential property tax increase for the city of Duncanville because of property values increasing because of high-quality schools. And again, we're not even taking the ten percent. We're only doing two percent and gets us to that point. So those are items, just some views of the school, how nice it's going to be, all brick, very, you know, it's not a portable building or something else that some other charter schools may have or some other schools may have. There's no modular. It's very beautiful school in my opinion. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Dahlberg with Life School.
Good evening. My name is Brian Dahlberg and I'm with a law firm that represents Life School. I want to thank you for the opportunity here tonight. And thanks to Mr. Nelson for giving me a few minutes. It wasn't discussed by the staff, but I know it's in his report. I'm sure y'all have all been briefed by the city attorney regarding public schools exemption from land use zoning ordinances so long as they don't act unreasonably or create a nuisance, which certainly is not gonna be the case here with Life School. But I want to expound on that. The actual case that's referenced in the staff report in front of you, Austin ISD versus City of Sunset Valley, involved simply on auxiliary use, a non-academic building that was separate and not adjacent to. And people might think, a lot of the opposition might be related to the athletic facility that is included, not so much to the school, but to the athletic facility. And I just wanted, want to tell y'all that the Supreme Court in that case said that unquestionably, a school has the right to develop an auxiliary use, whether it be a bus depot, a maintenance facility, an athletic facility, or a centralized administrative office building that is completely separate and not adjacent, even if we're separate, not adjacent to a school. even if we're separate, not adjacent to a school building. They have the same right to do that as they would for a school building, as they would for a use that is adjacent to a school building like this one is. Like I said a minute ago, Life School has acted reasonably in every respect. Its proposed development will not create a nuisance. We selected this location through a comprehensive process that was based on objective criteria and consideration of all relevant factors. And the proposed development complies with all the city ordinances related to safety and of course, our construction will comply with the building codes. We have, uh, engaged with the city and the community for the last two years, starting before Life School even purchased the property. There have been more than fifteen meetings with city officials and staff. There've been virtual calls, in-person town hall meetings, uh, the planned commission meetings, uh, meetings with residents. We've hosted commissioners, city council members out at the site to see what's going on. We've hosted some of you out at Life School's campus in Waukesha Hatchie to see how Life School operates, what their facilities look like. Life School has generally listened to community concerns. They have considered all practical measures that could accommodate those concerns. Uh, we've made several modifications to the proposed development that both city staff and Mr. Nelson just talked about. These include the traffic management plan, uh, exceed the city's requirements for onsite queuing by eighteen percent. They reconfigured the site plan that is gonna cost Life School probably, uh, about a million dollars just for the reconfiguration in order to resituate the athletic field so that it is farther from the Duncanville residential property lines. We have to balance, of course, the site creating issues, sewer and stormwater, detention, traffic flow, and obviously, most importantly, student safety. Um, but we've, we've taken all that into consideration. The specifically-designed field lighting, we expect just that is gonna cost about four-hundred thousand dollars more. Mr. Nelson mentioned, a full moon is zero-point-zero-one-foot candle, right? A full moon night out in the middle of nowhere with no additional lighting. And we're gonna be less than that, right? At the, the neighboring residential property lines, it's gonna be, we're gonna be adding less than a full moon's worth of light, um, to those property lines. The fears that these bright lights are gonna be illuminating people's living rooms are unfounded. It's just not what the light study suggests. The buffers vegetative screening probably costs Life School an additional six-hundred thousand dollars to add in the wall and the screening just to really protect, uh, the neighboring residential properties from having to look at the school and the field and vice versa. We've complied with all of the city-required traffic mitigation requirements. I'm sorry I've gone a little bit over time, but I just wanna say, there's been a misconception in the prior planned commission meetings that the traffic study was biased or that it can't be trusted and somehow anecdotal evidence and reports should take precedence over that, but that's simply not the case. It's not biased. This was a traffic study that was commissioned by the city. There was an independent review that was, again, commissioned by the city. Yes, we had our own traffic study that corroborated that, but that's not what the city staff report is basing, uh, those facts on. They're basing it on actual data that's collected, scientific principles that are applied. And those conclusions are drawn from that. They're not based on, I would say, anecdotal evidence or unfounded fears that relate to other developments. Finally, I think as recently as last week, Life School asked the city if there was anything else we could do, any other considerations that we could add. And we haven't heard anything. That's been the story all along, right? Everything the city has asked for, we have attempted to meet and accommodate. So with that, I'll close. I'll say Life School looks forward to becoming an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, the presentation is completed and we're gonna move into the, um...
Mayor, I, I think that there was, uh, some written comments that were sent to the city petition and some other things. I'd like all that stuff to be part of the record as well.
Yes, I have those right here.
Okay.
You talking about the request to speak?
No. We have petition, the city secretary has, that was submitted by residents and in opposition, and I want that part of the record so that you consider that along with whatever other information has been mailed in. So I want to ask the city secretary to identify that document, how many people signed and whether they were for or against.
Okay. We received a petition from a citizen on July ninth with a total of one-hundred-and-five signatures and, and opposed to the zoning change. And today, from people who did not want to speak, we have, uh, twenty in support of this item and twenty-two in opposition to this item.
And so Mayor, I would ask that those be part of the record for your consideration for this evening's proceedings.
So be it. Thank you. Yes, Councilman Coontz?
Is there any specific language in that petition that we might want to hear before? Or is it just general opposition?
There's no specific language. It says just, uh, um, opposition against Life School proposed zoning change.
There was, there was no particulars, Mr. Coontz, when I looked at it, so, just for the record.
Okay. It's now been recorded. Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move into the next portion, which we talked about earlier. And that is, um, those that wish to speak in support of. And again, we're gonna have, uh, two minutes per person. All I would ask is if you think that you may be saying them something and you want a, an elected official up here, if they hear something from you to talk, to ask you later, if you want to give your name when you come up, please do. Otherwise, just, uh, you got two minutes to speak and we'll be timing the two minutes and we'll be timing the one hour. All right? I don't, no, name and address isn't necessary for this. It's a public hearing. You wanna, okay, okay, I, I rescind. Okay, is it required? Okay. All right, so, uh, I withdraw my, my comments. We're gonna ask that if you come up to speak, please give your name and address. All right, with that, Kay Bateman. These are all in favor of.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kay Bateman. I live on four-twenty-two Blanco Street here in Duncanville, a short distance from the property you're considering for rezoning. I'm here as a longtime resident and as a proud parent who's daughter Megan graduated from Life School in two thousand and nine. This is the campus that's relocating to Duncanville. Back then, our only neighborhood option was Reed Middle School and then Duncanville High School. Both are a fine campus, but with nearly four thousand students, its size would have overwhelmed my daughter. She learns best in a smaller, relationship-driven setting. Life School provided that alternative, focused classrooms, teachers who knew her by name, and a culture that treated every student like a family. The results speak for themselves. Megan not only earned her high school diploma, she went on to complete her bachelor's degree at Talton State University and is now thriving in her career. Stories like hers aren't outliers. Life School consistently posts a hundred percent graduation rate, proving that its approach works for students who might otherwise slip through the cracks. I understand concerns about the traffic in the neighborhood impact. What I've witnessed with Life School is a goal of continuous improvement. They work tirelessly to ensure traffic moves fluidly. It is constantly evaluated for improvements. Life School has provided staggered drop-off times at the current location, courteous crossing guards, and a school leadership team that meets regularly with nearby residents to solve problems quickly. They were and still are good neighbors. Approving this rezoning gives families like mine a choice we once didn't have, right here in our community. It means students who need a smaller, values-driven environment can succeed without leaving the neighborhood. That strengthens property values, fosters civic pride, and most important, changes lives. On behalf of the current and future parents, I respectfully ask you to vote yes. Thank you for your time and investing in the children's success in our community.
Ruth Garuba? Take it I said that wrong?
You said it right and, um, I'm gonna be changing my name to Rose, so everyone kinda knows me as Rose.
Okay, address?
I don't live currently in Duncanville.
It's okay, what's your address?
Relocating to Duncanville.
Okay.
I'm in Cedar Hill right now. What? Well, okay, Ruth Garuba and it's thirteen-sixteen Scott Drive in Cedar Hill.
Thank you.
All right, so I am for Life School being here. My son and daughter were at the Life School in Mountain Creek and it was a little bit of a drive, but it's worth it for the different reasons, um, that the first lady just mentioned. Um, smaller classrooms, it worked with my schedule better, having the four-day work week and school week so that, um, I could spend more time with my children on Fridays. And, um, oh my gosh, I wrote a bunch of notes, but they are constantly improving things. Um, my daughter was previously bullied at the, um, Newman School that she went to. And then when we transferred to Life School and began being bullied there, 'cause she's twice the height of everybody else, they addressed it quickly. And, um, the counselor made sure that, um, they didn't just address the issue of, oh, we're not gonna make fun of her daughter because she's tall. They went into each and every classroom and did diversity training for all different types of peoples. And, um, my son loves it. He's gonna continue going this upcoming year. My daughter is, uh, gonna be at the Village Tech this upcoming year for her arts and creativity and the different things she loves doing. But, um, I have loved them being at the Life School that they're currently in. And, uh, they do consider everything that I have brought up, uh, as a parent with all of my concerns. And I would love to have that option close at hand and not have to drive as far. Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Rourke?
Hello, my name is Chad Rourke, uh, twelve-oh-seven Candlelight Avenue, Duncanville. My family moved to Duncanville about eight years ago and it's been an awesome experience. Uh, we love the town. We love the people. Me and my wife got, uh, the privilege to serve at a church, New Vita, and, um, it's over in Oak Cliff. We were, we were youth leaders and a lot of our teenagers were enrolled at Duncanville High School. And I, I don't really have anything bad to say about any of the students I've met. They had great, great, uh, stories to tell, good programs, things like that. I don't wanna come across someone that will bash the, the school. Like you said, the city of champions. They're pretty cool to brag about. But some of the stories you hear from some of the kids, I'm sure they're, could be exaggerated, all the, the fights. They talk about things like that with the, I don't know if it's overcrowding. I'm not a professional in that. I'm basically a glorified mechanic. Uh, but I did get to know several of those kids and, uh, my children currently go to Life School, Cedar Hill. Uh, it's an elementary school and, uh, they love it. We love it. The teachers are awesome. Staff's been great. Uh, the four-day school week has been amazing. Currently, I have two kids enrolled, but the third child, we're just trying to get, take naps off of us, so she's not in school yet. But I, I, I foresee her being a part of Life School as well from the experience we've had so far. Um, this, everything about the, the, the atmosphere, the spirit that they have for the kids there. Uh, it's been a wonderful experience and it would be awesome to have another option besides the high schools we have now. I've heard people say there's other charter schools, uh, one down the road in DeSoto. I don't know which one they're talking about. But I've heard people mention Village Tech, which we have friends that go there as well. It's a great school, I'm sure. But, uh, we also will face, if these schools even have room for these kids, if they don't go to a Life School because maybe it's too far in Waukesha Hatchie or wherever, wherever else they're gonna be. But, um, anyways, I hope you guys will vote for this school. Thank you.
Natasia Ruiz?
Can you hear me? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Hi, good evening. Good evening all. Um, so I'd like to introduce myself and more so just kinda give my experience, uh, with Life School.
Name and address, your na, full name and address?
Oh, Natasia Ruiz, six-seventeen Dartbrook Drive, DeSoto, Texas. So my name is Natasia Ruiz. I am a class of two thousand and twenty-one Life High School Waukesha Hatchie alumna and one of many who earned an associate's degree from Navarro College through their dual-credit program. I am also an Alcorn State University graduate, currently pursuing my doctorate of physical therapy, while also working as a PT tech in Midlothian. Um, not only did I participate in sports at Life School, but I also got to go on and play the sport that I love while pursuing a higher education. I would like to start off by saying that I owe it to Life School for being where I am today. I was prepared, educated, and led to success by an amazing staff. Except for me, staff is not the right word. Life School offered me a family outside of a home, a place where I knew my questions would be answered and my importance was validated. I began my journey at Life School in kindergarten and can confidently say that I never doubted or had a moment where I felt like anywhere else could offer me better. I have made amazing friends and made even better memories. My teachers always had my best interests as well as my classmates at heart. They truly cared for us and wanted us to see, wanted to see us be great in anything that we did. That goes for all aspects of the school, whether it was academics, sports, or the fine arts. There was always a teacher or a coach who made you feel like you belonged and a support system who I cannot think enough for always being consistent. Even now, I still keep in touch with many of my teachers who guided me and their encouragement and support has remained a steady presence in my life. I'd like for you guys to really consider this and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edward Perry?
Hello, Edward Perry, eight-twenty-four Canyon Place, DeSoto, Texas. I'm also a former student. I went to the campus that's gonna be getting relocated and I graduated in two thousand and fourteen. And I strongly support Life High School moving here to Duncanville. Uh, as a former student, I experienced firsthand the values, the support, and sense of purpose that Life School benefits, um, and instills in the students. But I also know that there were opportunities that I didn't have that our new students will have at Life High School Duncanville. Relocating the, relocating to Duncanville opens the door for a whole new level of community engagement. Our student-led clubs and organizations are already doing incredible work where we are in Oak Cliff through food drives, clothing donations, and service projects. Bringing these efforts to a new community here in Duncanville will not only enrich our students, but it'll also have a lasting positive impact here in Duncanville. Life High Schools, Life High Schools' move to Duncanville isn't just about a new building, but it's about building relationships and it's about preparing our young people to lead with character and purpose and about becoming a partner in the future of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Rourke?
My name is Charles Rourke and I live in twelve-oh-seven Candlelight Avenue. My whole elementary experience has been at Life School Cedar Hill and has pushed me towards greater heights of learning. The atmosphere is amazing because the teachers actually want to help you learn and we have fun. I would love the opportunity to continue my education in high school at a Duncanville campus.
Thank you. Was that another Rourke shouting out in the back? Thought so. Okay, I'm gonna try this one. Cassandra Suter? Cassandra? May not be to say the right name wrong, but anybody, Cassandra. All right, I'm gonna hold on to that card in case, uh, she stepped out for a moment and move on to Emily Bridges?
Hello, Emily Bridges, four-one-eight Oleander, seven-five-one-three-seven.
Hello, Emily Bridges, four one eight Oleander, seven five one three seven. I'm here to show my support for adding another high school option in our city for several compelling reasons. First, it can enhance student success by providing more educational flexibility, which is crucial for diverse learning needs. Additionally, it can lead to greater parental satisfaction as families often seek schools with better performance metrics. This move could also spark innovation within our school district, ultimately benefiting the entire tri-city's area. Recent studies indicate that prospective homeowners prioritize test scores and graduation rates when choosing a neighborhood. And there is a noticeable difference in ratings. Duncanville scores a two out of ten compared to Life School Waukesha Hatchie's seven out of ten. Publicschoolreview.com numbers for Duncanville High School is the bottom fifty percent with math proficiency at sixteen percent and reading at thirty-seven percent. This isn't meant to criticize our high school, but rather to highlight the potential for improvement overall within the city of Duncanville. While I understand the concerns of homeowners, it's important to consider the broader impact on the community. Many homes are already near schools or parks, which come with their own noise, so adding another school might not be as disruptive as some may fear. I want to applaud Life School for staying committed to the education of our youth. Lastly, it's worth pondering why some of our very own elected officials choose to send their schools, their children to schools outside of our public schools for better educational opportunities. This is not a competition, but rather a need that I hope our city can get behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I saw someone walk in, so I'm gonna take a chance. Cassandra? No? Okay, thank you. Alright, at this point, those were people that filled out cards. Is there anybody else that'd like to come up and speak in support of this request tonight?
Erica Browning, four four two East Cherry Street. Something that has not been mentioned is the number of apartments that are being built on the Dallas side of Camp Wisdom and also on Clark, on the Dallas side of Clark on Wheatland. And that will unfortunately bring a lot more students into our own school district. They won't be going to Dallas schools. And having another middle school and high school option is going to be beneficial because of the large, larger number of students, and our schools are already pretty crowded. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the request? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Noah, many of you and many in this room. Excuse me, Jason Reese, six one seven Dartbrook, DeSoto. I was reserved in coming up here and proposed that my daughter come, and without hesitation, she accepted that invitation. She spoke amongst the crowd earlier and shared her story. I stayed the night in a parking lot to get my daughter in Life School, two thousand and seven. Y'all remember the storm, it was March Madness. Worst storm Dallas has seen in a while, we had all the stuff happen. I did that with intent, I was, I'm a Lancaster High School product. I at one point lived in Duncanville. I did not have the privilege or opportunity, although my family had a business here, to attend Duncanville. Two of my brothers and sisters did, and they've gone off to do amazing things. I too don't bash our school districts, but I am pro-choice, I'm pro-opportunity. Like the last individual just stated, some of us choose higher education based on what's good and for our child, what we want them to do, what we want them to see and experience. Life School's done nothing but given that to me. I would stay the night again. I just ask that you take into consideration all the opinions and suggestions, look at the impact, and think beyond yourselves this evening. Life School's a great product, and it is pro-choice, it's pro-option, and that four-day schedule does allow a lot of opportunity, especially for our stay-at-home mothers, which is crucially needed right now to be involved with our kids' upbringing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to come up and speak in support of the request? Okay, last call, anyone that would like to speak in support of the request? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to those who would like to speak in opposition, starting with Nisa Sasser?
Good evening, everyone, council members. I had a lot of notes.
Name and address.
Oh, name and address, Nisa Sasser, Hartford fifteen thirty-one MacArthur Drive, Duncanville, Texas. So I had a lot of notes that I was writing even before the meeting, but basically it just boils down to asking you as council members to keep the affected area that Life School bought as SF thirteen, its intended land use. I won't go through the many notes I have about traffic, safety concerns, we've all heard that, and I'm sure we're gonna hear more about it tonight. But we're asking not just our neighborhood, but other surrounding neighborhoods in Duncanville. The majority do not, please do not rezone and consider keeping it as SF thirteen. So some of the comments, one of the comments Life School made earlier was we might be in a better position. Life School cannot make that determination for us. So we're putting it in your hands, listening to all of the suggestions, recommendations, and so forth, to make the best decision for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Horace Preston?
Horace Preston, fifteen oh three MacArthur Drive. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council City Members. City Council Members, my apologies. As said before, my name is Horace Preston, and I'm a proud upcoming senior at Duncanville High School. I'm here today to respectfully express my opposition to the construction of Life School. While I understand that this charter school may not take away from existing resources or programs, I still believe it's unnecessary. Duncanville High School already provides everything students need to succeed, and I'm living proof. I'm a varsity football player, a dual-credit student at our collegiate program, who will be graduating in May with over fifty college credits, a DECA business leader, and the treasurer of our National Arms Society at Duncanville High School. These experiences weren't limited to just me. Many of my classmates are excelling through strong academics with over twenty-six AP classes offered, involvement opportunities with over twenty clubs offered, and college preparation as Duncanville just sent four students to Ivy League schools this year. We don't lack opportunity, we have it. We don't lack access, we have it. What we need is continued belief in the strength of the schools already serving this community. Rather than bringing in new systems, we should be focused on growing and supporting what we already have. Thank you for your time and listening to the voice of a student who's benefited from your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Hugh, Hugh Belton?
Good evening, Hugh Belton, fifteen thirty Halsey Drive in Duncanville. Been there for eighteen years. I'd like to have a few notes, but I'm gonna hit the high points. Mainly, I don't, we're not opposed to development, but just we don't want the wrong kind of development. And the biggest item I wanna bring out most is the impact on public services without contributing to the tax base that supports those public services. And with that, I'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Marsha Potts?
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. Marsha Potts, nine four seven Fairway, Duncanville. I'm too gonna just kinda jump around on some notes that I have. I wanna start by saying, in a couple of meetings that we've had in the past, we've sat through listening to employees from Life School, students from Life School, that generally seemed to only want it here in Duncanville because it was closer to home. They've made the choice to be a part of Life School, decided in Waukesha Hatchie, Cedar Hill, and other areas. I don't think my community, my neighborhood, and my neighbors should have to take the hit for a decision that's made to put it in a community instead of an area like it is in Waukesha Hatchie, on a street service road where there are not disturbing homes, lives of people who have been there for twenty years. I've been in Duncanville at this same spot for twenty-one years. Some of my neighbors have been thirty and forty years. They're not in the mindset at this point in their lives to hear bands and football games and lights. While the gentleman said the lights would be taken care of, the noise and the sound, you won't touch it because we can still hear DeSoto High School on football nights and other activity nights. We can still hear them right outside of, when we walk outside. Sometimes we don't even have to walk outside to hear them. So that's one of the reasons, or some of the reasons, that we're very much against it. Traffic? Duncanville, we, I mean, if you all are council members truly involved in the city, you should already know what the traffic is like now at a regular light. Now it's already going into the back streets where you have to wait seven and eight cars back on every side in order to pass through a stop sign. So we already have a problem. So we're gonna put a problem on top of a problem and expect two lanes, a right-turn lane here and a right-turn lane here, to fix it? I don't think so, and we're talking about, if not more than, but almost two thousand students, which are gonna be parents, teachers, family, friends, all of those things joining that massive effort of this one project coming into our neighborhoods. This is where we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Brown Young?
Good evening, Mayor, and to City Council. My name is Alicia Brown Young, I live at fifteen oh three Halsey Drive, Duncanville, Texas. We've been before planning and zoning several times discussing this issue, and the statistics speaks for themselves. There are fourteen hundred and ninety-five open seats in charter schools in this area. We do not need another charter school. Another thing I wanna address really quickly is that every time we have this meeting, the majority of people that are in favor do not live in Duncanville. And that's very concerning and very disturbing to me. Let me just say, as a concerned citizen, I am strongly opposed to the construction of this project. It is deeply troubling that those responsible for the project, are proposing the project, seem more focused on their own interests than on the well-being of the people who are actually living here. There has been little to no meaningful engagement with the community and absolutely no consideration of how this project would negatively affect our quality of life. We, the residents, will have to deal with the increased noise, traffic, and congestion, and long-term disruption, yet our voices are being ignored. Ignoring the concerns of the people most affected is not just inconsiderate, it's irresponsible. We want to be heard, and our community deserves to be heard. Ignoring the concerns of the people most affected is not just inconsiderate, as I said, but is totally irresponsible. We deserve to be heard. And I can say, I've been living in Duncanville for eighteen years. I love my community and I love my neighborhood. But as the City Council, it would be my hope that you will listen to the voices and the heart, because we've been speaking about statistics, we've been speaking about a lot of things, but listen to the heart of the people who live in this community. Listen to the hearts of what we want. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Chandler McGann?
Chandler McGann, eleven eighteen Bradley Drive. I brought some slides tonight. On May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, I contacted the city manager, relevant departments, and Life School leadership regarding consistent violations of City Ordinance twelve forty-eight regarding overgrown weeds and tall grass within a hundred and fifty feet of our property. While an elected official outside of our voting district offered to visit, no city staff or Life School representatives responded. That lack of engagement speaks volumes. Earlier on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, I submitted an email with written landowner permission detailing visible violations from Cumulus Court in DeSoto, Texas, with written landowner permission for the city to enter the private property to witness the violations. There's no follow-up, no action. And again, on May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, I contacted Life School directly requesting they bring their property into compliance, still nothing. Tonight, I asked this council to enforce the ordinances already in place. Issue a citation to Life School. Brent is sitting right over here, he can take the citation home with him tonight. Pursue the daily fine of up to five hundred dollars a day for the property not being in compliance. File the privileged lien, which is only a step down from a tax lien, on the property. Hire a contractor to bring the site up to code and community standards. The next thing I wanna show you is that our home is on this map. We are within two hundred feet of this soccer field, actually the property itself, so we actually get to vote. One of the things that wasn't considered tonight was that all the residents that live within two hundred feet that submitted documentation to you are opposed to this actually happening. But my house is right here. I don't see anybody from Life School's house on here. My neighbors' homes are here too.
Thank you. Jason Barton?
Hi, my name's Jason Barton, I live at eleven fourteen Bradley Drive, Duncanville, Texas. This is the fifth meeting I've had to come out to, to speak in opposition of the rezoning. This is my first home, I have been living there for about eight years now. It was my intention to make it kind of my forever home, my family. When this surfaced about a year and a half ago, the initial plans put the stadium about, what, two hundred feet off my back door. I've got nine-year-old twin girls, and we really didn't look to purchase a house that would end up with a competition stadium in our backyard. So that coupled with the change in traffic in the area, two thousand high school and middle school students coming into our community, I mean, just a lot of that, I feel, will leverage our property value in kind of a negative way. So, you know, I'm looking at this area as it having been kind of where we wanted to establish our family and kind of grow, but with the kind of disturbances and quality of life that we can look forward to with the school in our backyard and a competition stadium for that matter, definitely gives us pause. So, you know, as we kinda look forward to the future, you know, I'm hoping that there will be a potential shift towards not changing the zoning, but yeah, I think that's kind of all I have there, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Linda Johnson? Linda Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Linda Johnson. I live at nine thirty Fairway Drive, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven. I built my home in Duncanville in nineteen ninety-one on Fairway Drive. I'm opposed to Life School being built into my neighborhood, and I hope that this council will deny again their requests. I won't go over the traffic issue, it's been discussed enough. And if you've driven down Cockrell Hill Road, you know what I'm talking about. My biggest issue, too, is the athletic field. And I don't care what kind of wall they build, what kind of trees they put up, it will not deter the noise. I was in a band. I was the major at it in high school years ago. I lived a mile from a high school. I heard the noise when the band played a mile from the high school when they had football games. I don't care kind of what kind of wall you put up, you're gonna hear it. Those people that live right up on, at school, like the gentleman said, you're gonna hear it, all the noise in the world, all the walls and trees that you put up, you're still gonna hear it. We want our peace. We still have a beautiful neighborhood, but ever since Life School has come to start building, we have not had peace. The trees, the disruption, all of that has started in, on my neighborhood. I have not had any peace since the school had decided to build. An alternative, if you're gonna give them some kind of permission, let them use some of Duncanville's parks. Let them use some of Duncanville, we got, what, seventeen parks? Let them use some of their parks. Let them use Duncanville High School fields. Or if they got that kind of money, let them use another athletic field somewhere else and enhance the educational department. Thank you for their time, your time, in allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Cooks.
Evening, Council again. Mark Cooks, eleven oh six Bradley Drive, Duncanville. If you heard something familiar, everyone's coming up here saying Duncanville, that is opposed, and I also oppose. As I listen to staff, as I listen to Life School, there's a lot of information in there that's not correct. And I would hope that staff also would have presented to you the risk of approved changing single-family to planning and development. Here's the risk. The risk is sixty-nine homes in the Meadows of Daniel Farms brings property tax over two hundred thousand dollars to the city. A hundred acres, based upon a developer, a local developer, a hundred acres with single-family homes would bring the city eight hundred and forty thousand dollars tax, property tax. The information we're hearing from Life School, that is not so true. Economic development, I wish, we just heard people, we just saw you vote to say no for gas station. Why? Because there was too many. Well, there's enough in eleven point seven square miles in Duncanville that we have right now. Matter of fact, if you think about almost a year ago, Duncanville and us, we voted for a hundred and seventy thou, a hundred and seventy million dollar bond to improve our local district. That raised our taxes, and we was fine. Now, however, we're talking about a school? We're talking about that that's also will raise our taxes? Let me also, at least about fifty dollars is what I'm understanding for sure. Let me tell you, Council, and you know this for sure, this is not about the school, this is about the stadium that they're putting in our backyard. And if I turn, if I look out of my window today, I will see the stadium and hear the noise. I'm asking you to take this into consideration when you're talking about all the misinformation the Life School is bringing to you today. It is false information. Please take that into consideration.
Keisha Ware.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Keisha Ware. I reside at eighteen fourteen Richland Way, Duncanville, Texas. I wanted to bring a little context to the conversation that we're having here tonight. I feel like there's been some misrepresentation in terms of the placing of items. In terms of the stadium, people keep saying that the east side of it is DeSoto. There's also the Thorntree Estates community that's to the east side, and my home is in Thorntree Estates, and it is within two hundred meters of the proposed project, and we would be looking at the stadium with the lights and things like that. The majority of my neighbors are elderly, and they're not here tonight. I've served on the HOA Board of Thorntree Estates for the last few years. We have not been contacted by Life School or had any representatives in our neighborhood or area to ask us for any input about how the school being built adjacent to our community would impact our community. What's also needed to be put into context, too, is we live in an area in a part of the city where we have different cities that intersect at that Cockrell Hill intersection. We already have a school on the backside, which is in DeSoto, which is Kingdom Collegiate Academy. There are multiple homes being built and businesses back behind the proposed school that are still being built out, which is gonna bring additional traffic, and I don't know if that's been considered in the proposal and project that's been given. So, that's gonna increase traffic significantly as well. There's no light at Winter Green and West Moreland. There's only a short light on the Daniel Dale roadside. So, if traffic gets backed up, it takes ten, fifteen, twenty minutes just to get out either community on either side. There's only one way in and out of Thorntree Estates. So, the traffic is a big problem with our neighbors. They chose the community. Most of my neighbors are elderly and retired. They chose this community to retire in, to be quiet and peaceful. They're educators, they're principals, they're higher education professionals, they're teachers. They value education, but they chose this community to be their quiet, safe haven. And I ask that you vote against rezoning. Thank you.
Virginia Brown. Virginia Brown.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Brown. I live at eleven thirty-five Nimitz Drive in Duncanville, Texas. I hate to keep going over the traffic, but y'all could've just came by my house and asked me about the traffic, and I could've told you, because I built my house in two thousand and six. I was one of the first six houses built in the Meadows of Daniel Farms. My house backs up to Daniel Dale. What the first thing I witnessed, I was so excited about living there, but the first thing that caught my attention was the ambulance going up and down because the high school is right around the corner. And I was like, oh my God, I'm gonna have to get used to this. So, I just start enjoying seeing the lights go by. But then here comes the eighteen-wheelers, and it was just few. Now it's a lot. Why? Because we have warehouses down at the other end. And so, we live in a gated community. Now, what we have to do over the nineteen years I've been there, because I'm watching out of my window, I can see buses, I can see cars, you cannot go to Sam's in the mornings, you cannot get out, we have to leave the gates open so the buses don't get caught trying to unlock the gates, because otherwise it's gonna back that traffic up. We're trying to go out. Hollywood Park is trying to come here, I'm trying to go there, and then we got people coming here. Then if you go make a right on Cockrell Hill to get on sixty-seven, poor Hollywood Park, they're inching out, people are trying to let them get through. I go straight out Daniel Dale so I can make a right and just get on the freeway. Some days, I'm tempted to just go sixty-seven, go all the way out Daniel Dale, then get on sixty-seven, and go thirteen eighty-two so I can get to Grand Prairie, where I work. And so, I don't, education is wonderful. We're not opposed to the education. I think it's great. It sounds like a beautiful school. We just don't want it to leave Safo Clip and come to Duncanville. That's just it. We just wanna have our peace. I'm sixty-eight. I was gonna retire next month when I turned sixty-nine, but I'm gonna keep on working. But it's hard to get to work, and I'm having to leave early, and I like to sleep in just a little bit. So, I'm just, if y'all want any more and more traffic study, just come by my house, and we can sit on the patio and watch how that traffic backs up at, in the morning, three o'clock, you can get through there. Thank you.
Thank you. City Secretary, how are we doing on time overall? Okay. Wow. Terry Nguyen.
Terry Nguyen, eleven thirty-one Nimitz Drive, Duncanville, Texas. So, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm here today as a concerned resident of Meadows of Daniel Farms and the young lady that just came up as my neighbor. And so, my backyard, it faces Daniel Dale. I get a chance to see that traffic every single day. It builds up, I work upstairs in my office, I can see the traffic continuously building up, going towards the Bolton Boone area. And so, in my mind, all I can think about is when there are emergency services that need to get through with all this congestion now, how are they going to potentially save someone's life? You know, I've been thinking about that a lot because there's been a few accidents now, because we do have new, you know, a new build right next to us, and it's really disturbing. It's very difficult to understand why we would bring even more traffic. We heard him earlier say there's gonna be about three thousand, you know, additional students that are gonna be potentially coming to this school. That's a problem in itself. You know, I think some of the, the safety issues that we're having would definitely increase traffic and also any visitor activity that they're gonna have throughout the day. I'm looking at morning, noon, and night, there's gonna be difficult traffic. Also, the noise and light pollution, even though I'm living there, I guarantee you, there's gonna be issues with noise, even with me living all the way in the front of our complex, you know? And so, I don't think that we need to add another school right in our backyard. I think we need to make sure that, you know, our residents have the peace that the young lady said as well. I think we all need to have the opportunity to say, hey, we wanna live here. I've lived here, actually, let me just say this, I've lived in Duncanville since two thousand and eight. And so, I moved here, and it was peaceful, and it's already getting crazy. So, please oppose this rezoning effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Kendra Peoples. Kendra Peoples. Dee Simmons.
Ladies of the community, I'm here to oppose.
Your name and address. Get closer to the mic.
I'm here to oppose.
Your name and address.
My name is Dr. Charity Simmons. I'm a gynecologist. I know all about education.
Okay, and your address, please.
Nine three nine Fairway Drive, and I have lived there for over thirty-nine years. I like the peace, I like the quiet. Nobody is going to tell me, or any of us, that we are going to put fifteen hundred-capacity stadium, up to three thousand, and put up trees and the walls, and expect that to swallow that noise? It's impossible. That is going to stress us out. We are going to get sick. Health issue is at stake. Now, then there are the ambulances all the way from DeSoto up in there, they are coming down the street. What are they going to do with the traffic? What are they going to do? We have extras that have been brought in by Life School to tell us what to do with our neighborhood. Please don't allow this to happen. Traffic is already bad for the people, especially the people right by Daniel Dale Farm. They don't need any more headache. We don't need any more of this. We are done. We have people from North Dallas, they live in nice gated community, we like our peace. We don't need any more. So, please, no more. Thank you.
Thank you. William, William T. May. William, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor Contreras, because I was on the Sign Control Board with you for a while, so I know you remember that. Good evening, Honorable Council. My name is William May. My address is fifteen fifteen McArthur Drive in Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven. I am retired military. I did twenty-two years in Air Force, and me and my wife, she's retired as well, we settled in Duncanville. Duncanville is a great town, it's a city of champions, and we settled here basically because we wanted peace. And our area was a nice, quiet neighborhood with a gated community, one way in, one way out. And Daniel Dale, during that time, there wasn't another subdivision next to us, and those woods and that hundred-acre area back behind us was just vacant. And we could hear coyotes and all sorts of critters out there, but it was a beautiful, peaceful area. We heard rumors that there was gonna be a school, but we were been, we'd been there for fourteen years, and no school popped up. So, we just kinda got used to that peace. And what we're asking is that you guys do not allow Life School to change that area. We would be better off, for the city, to have houses, houses that would be equal to ours, taxpayers who can pay taxes. They can generate income for the city. They can bring in new people, new ideas, build the community. And we also know that Daniel Dale and Cockrell Hill is a busy intersection, and the traffic is horrendous in the mornings. Red Oak comes through there, and we got the new subdivision, Cedar Hill, DeSoto comes through there. So, that traffic is building up, and we have one way out and one way in, and Life School is gonna make that worse. And we ask that you help us as voters, as citizens of Duncanville, to take care of that. Don't approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Zilka.
Greg Zilka, thirteen nineteen Green Tree Lane, Duncanville, seventy-five one three seven, for this one, and the other one that I might have forgotten my address. Mayor and Council, thank you for considering this item. This school does have passion for their students, and I really appreciate that. There's nothing wrong with helping a student grow. My concern is the city and the left hand and the right hand. You have taxes that come in, and you have services that go out. What is the opportunity cost of changing R-three to something else in this decision? And that's what I want you to keep in mind, because we have bond issues that are on the table, which are gonna raise our taxes if voters approve it, for services that are desperately needed. We have streets that are failing because they're coming to the end of their lifespan. We have fire services that are needed because we need additional fire station maybe, and additional manpower. How are these gonna be paid? We have understaffed police department constantly, and I, you know, I, I understand that these are challenges that the city needs to address, but if we don't have the funding and we have an opportunity loss for in our residential zoning to go away, how are we gonna pay for that loss? So, that's why I'm opposed to this, because I don't know how we would pay for that. I appreciate your time and service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call out Kendra Peoples again. No Kendra Peoples. Okay, gone. So, that's the end of our list of people that signed up to speak. Is there anyone opposed that didn't fill out a card that wants to speak? Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Yes, Karen Maldonado, 2045 Flora Lane, De Soto, Texas. And I do want to make the caveat that although I'm not part of Duncanville, if you had looked at the map that was brought up by the staff, I am one of the homes directly adjacent to that fence line that they put up, right where the stadium is going to be. Which is interesting because that's the exact same map they showed last year without any adjustments to how it's going to affect my home, which is still there with all the light. I do want to say, I have a lot of empathy for the folks in education. My mother was a special ed teacher, is still a special ed teacher. So, I understand how important it is to have dedicated resources to all the students that need it. She has been seeing how it affects day in and day out to have new charter schools brought up and how it reduces the resources in her current school. She no longer has enough admin. She no longer has enough teachers there to support the people and the students that she's trying to support. And my hope and what I'm really begging y'all to do is to continue putting resources rather than to new tax avenues, like a new public school, but into the current public schools that probably very much need them. Because if I have kids here someday, which I hope to, that's where I want to put them. I went through the public school system. I went through one of the poorest public school systems in San Antonio and was very privileged enough to go to a great university, get a master's there, and now work in artificial intelligence. So, I know the public school system works. I know better resources work better. I currently live in my dream home. I feel, I go into my backyard, it's quiet and it's peaceful, and I hope it continues to be that. And I hope we continue to put our resources into areas that drastically need them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, once again, I'm going to call for anyone else in the opposition that hasn't spoken or didn't put a card in. Okay, last call. No takers. Okay. All right, with that, thank you for all your comments. We're going to move, see if I can get a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, before you do that, you had asked us to have the map that has opposition within 200 feet.
Yes, sir.
Because that's significant. I would like that map to be passed out to you all. And have it part of the record. And that was provided to me by staff. All right. So, I'm not going to bring it up, so.
You explain this later?
I can do it later or I can do it now. So, I'll do it now. There's two provisions in the law that require supermajority with regard to zoning matters. One, if there's a denial by the P and Z, that requires the council to approve a zoning case by a supermajority, which is three-fourths. Another is if the 20% of the land within 200 feet, and it's the area and not the number, constitutes 20% or more opposition, a supermajority is required of three-fourths. In your case with a seven-member council, in order to approve the zoning request, you need a vote of six affirmative votes. That's why it's significant. So, I need to have that into the record.
Counsel clear on that?
Thank you.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Attorney, I see some are red and some are blue. Is...
Some are red and some are blue. Some were actually written responses. If you'll notice the key up there, others were based on the petition that was referred to earlier.
Okay, so, all of these...
So, I think the red's petition, the blue was based on written opposition that was received separate from the petition.
Okay. All of the red and blue are opposition. Thank you.
Okay, did we, Mr. McNabb Burnett?
Thank you. City Attorney, City Attorney, I'd like a clarification too because a number of emails were sent to us. And I don't know if these are the same addresses or not, but is that, should that be part of our record as well?
If you have them here, they can be entered into the record.
Okay. Still looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Councilman McNabb Burnett, second by Coontz. Councilman Coontz, please vote. Okay, we have closed the public hearing at 9:46 PM. Okay, Counsel. Now, you've heard a lot of comments from those that were in favor and those that were opposed. Does anyone have questions in response to anything that was said by either side? Any questions or individuals? Mr. McNabb Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess for the representative of HKS, I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
On your presentation, you said there was a 10% increase of property value for a good school and you went conservative with the 2%?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any documentation or support that you have or how was that created or done?
We have an economic study that is in the packet, which has, is supported by data that we can provide more for.
And who does the, who did the economic study?
A, our advisory, HKS Advisory Group, that's a separate entity that did it for them.
Also...
That, Life School.
Okay. Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Everything that I heard, like when we talk about height requirements and that stuff, there was nothing higher than 36 foot?
That's correct. There's a one small clear story area, but that's on the plan, just a small area in the middle. But yes, nothing is, nothing is over 36 feet.
Okay. You heard a lot about traffic mitigation and traffic impact?
Yes.
You know, and it's obvious that you said that, hey, y'all are doing things to try to help that. Can you tell me how and what you're doing?
Yes. So, one thing I would like to point out is that these are, all this traffic mitigation is done by, you know, through scientific studies, the traffic was measured, what is existing, how it will be affected. In the studies are also growth without the school put in. So, there was a comment about how's it going to be when we grow. That's within the study and the mitigation. I'll go over some. So, we're putting in new turn lanes at the intersection of Daniel Dale and Cockrell Hill that will benefit the community at all times. We're restriping that intersection to help it flow better. We're putting in right turn lights at that intersection to help that flow better during the school hour or drop off and pickup and then other times. We're putting in new streetlights. There's going to be 10 new streetlights because we're adding the turn lane. So, it requires new streetlights. There's a 450-foot turn lane and a new signal at the high school driveway. And then, there's also a right turn. And then, for the middle school, when it's built, there will also be a new turn signal and right turn lanes, all footed by Life School.
And it's a phase two.
Yeah, in the phase two. The other thing I forgot to mention before is we're also adding a 10-foot sidewalk on Daniel Dale at the request of the city quite a few years or, you know, at the beginning of this process for, I think, bike lanes. And then, of course of our development, we are putting a new sidewalk all the way from Daniel Dale to the end of, to where the flood plain or the bridge is on Cockrell Hill along that for access. And then, there will be a crosswalk at the, at our light for people to go to the park or other things if they're riding their bike or those things.
Okay. Thank you. And then, noise. I mean, you've obviously heard the resonance regarding noise. I mean, I know you suggested screening and that lines, but how would you mitigate noise?
We would abide by any noise ordinances that would also apply to the, we would ask that per the charter school agreement that would apply, whatever applies to Duncanville High School also.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I've got a question. I've got a letter, July 8, 2025, directed to Mr. Kane, and it is signed by you. Are you familiar with the letter? It's a two-page letter, just summarizing your opinion about the P and Z decision?
Yes.
Okay. Let me start out first by, you've called out by name two specific P and Z members that you felt were misinformed or ill-informed?
We, one of the issues was that the TNP was not part of the thing which it is. And so, that was one of the items that we called out.
Just one item, do you recall?
I'm not sure. The other item, I know that Brian can help us here too.
Okay.
Sure, the items referenced in that letter.
Mayor, Mayor, I want your question answered, but this is not a public hearing. You asked a question, Mr. Nelson. If you can't ask a question, you can ask a question. But this isn't a free-for-all. Public hearing's closed. So, he asked Mr. Nelson a question. If Mr. Nelson cannot answer the question, that's fine. If he wants Mr. Dahlberg, you need to ask Mr. Dahlberg, not Mr. Nelson.
Okay. I was...
Did you write the letter?
Yes, but it was with Mr. Dahlberg. I don't have the letter immediately in front of me. The other issue was about traffic and that the traffic existing was bad. While it may be, appear to be bad, in that, in the code and what's allowed by the code and common standards, the current intersection meets the standards allowable. And our mitigation also gets that back to that standard. So, that was the issue of the traffic.
Okay. Additionally, you criticize Mr. Davis for lack of a specific provision dealing with the volume of sound emitted from the Life Schools' anticipated athletic activities. You showed in the presentation, pretty, I would say, sophisticated shot of how you're going to control the sound levels or what you've done to minimize the sound transfer. Pretty complicated stuff. So, I guess you, what you're suggesting is that you had that information and Mr. Davis didn't have it?
No. What I, what was saying was if there was any specific things that want to be addressed with the sound, like timeframe or anything else, it was just an issue of sound.
Okay. Last thing I'll say on this. Because it's, it's fair to be able to challenge people in their decision-making process. It's highly unusual, the way the names have been called out in here. It seems to be, in my opinion, a little aggressive, given that there are a respected group of individuals that are committed members of that particular planning and zoning commission. You make a last statement here, "A few residents, a few residents focus their opposition generally on the proposed athletic venue." Now, you've heard here a lot tonight, and I would say that by tonight, the people that talked about the athletic venue, there's more than a few here tonight. Maybe when you wrote this letter, you didn't think there were, but you've heard tonight. But short of eliminating the athletic venue from the plans, which we asked you to move it, we asked you to consider moving it. There was no effort to move it, no discussion later on to help us understand why it couldn't be moved to another location. So, I find that not very accurate. But short of eliminating the athletic venue from the plans, there were no specific substantive, substantive requests for changes or modifications that Life School was asked to accommodate. Well, I would tell you that probably not in writing, but at the town hall meeting, and Mr. Wilson, you were there, and at other meetings that we had, it was perfectly clear that the biggest concern when this all started wasn't the traffic. It wasn't even Life School. People talk highly of Life School. But now, I'm reading this and I'm just really disappointed that we were supposed to do something different. And unless we did that, you made no effort to, our verbal request from many people, many of the same ones that made remarks tonight. So, I just have to point that out because that, that right there, to me, we're trying to be good, good neighbors. I've met with Mr. Wilson a number of times over the last year and a half, and we've had pleasant conversations. I thought he was transparent and honest with me, and I hope he felt the same way about me. Because I've never had an opposition to Life School. Many, and I don't know if there's some in this crowd today, but I got many emails and phone calls. I got a phone call from a kid that played baseball with my son in Duncanville many years ago, and he was a teacher, a coach at the Life School in Waukesha Hachie. And we had a long conversation. These are great kids. I think you have great teachers. I think you have a great operation. It just disturbs me that the tactics, the tactics that are used late in the game seem to be those of more desperation and not participation in conversations with us. So, I will tell you that. That's what my observations are. And I've got another light on, Mr. Cherry Brown.
So, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out, whether you were in for it or in opposition of it, because it's 10:00 at night. So, that says that whatever your feelings are, strong. So, thank you, thank you for coming out. You know, while I agree that we do need other high school alternatives, I live in District 4, so I do travel that, that area and the challenges with traffic. I know we have those challenges. I, I'm grateful that you all came to us with this and that, you know, you've heard what everyone's said and you've tried to do different things. But some things, I feel in that area today, it's just not going to help with a lot of the concerns. I'm a senior as well. I'm a light sleeper, and so, I do appreciate my sleep. So, you know, at this time, I can't agree with moving forward with this, Mayor, and I just want to say that.
Anybody else? Ms. Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor. Is it appropriate for me to ask staff a question at this moment? Okay, staff, Mr. Olson or Representative for...
Mr. Kane.
Kane. Thank you. With Olson. I knew I heard Olson. So, did we do an independent traffic study?
We were not contract, we were not contracted to do that independent study. That was actually contracted with Walter P. Moore. That was a separate entity that reviewed it an additional time after another firm by WSB had reviewed the traffic management plan and the TIA that was submitted by the applicant. So, you have two independent reviews that have been, that were requested by the city and confirmed in both of them that the mitigations that the applicant's proposing meet, or again, I would say, meet the minimum requirement or requirements that would be from a traffic standpoint.
So, I'm wondering if we would have conducted our own traffic study of our area, knowing the data that we have about safety in that area, would we have had a different result in the traffic study? And then, because what I'm understanding is we had their traffic study, the applicant's traffic study, reviewed by two independent firms. traffic study, reviewed by two independent firms, but not conducted our own, and I'm not sure if we would have come up with the same type of traffic study results. Is that possible? Do you know?
I'm not a traffic engineer, you know, but again, from, from, and I believe your, 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 um, Public Works Director is here. I, I would say, working for a firm and a company that does traffic management, does traffic engineering, the standards are going to be the standards. A, at the end of the day, from the standpoint of how you design streets, um, how you move traffic, how you move people throughout the area. Uh, and so, it's going to come to, in my opinion, it's going to be coming to a very similar conclusion, and I believe that's reflected in the two independent reviews that were done. The city did ask the applicant to expand that area as well, because originally it did not include, you know, the intersection of Cockroil Hill in, uh, US 67. And so, at the request, because of the concerns that the city, I believe, was aware of at that time, did ask the consultants to expand their study areas, and again, both of those were reviewed, and the consensus from both of the independent studies were, again, the mitigations that are being proposed are going to work for the application that's in front of you.
Okay. Um, 182 was reported in favor. Are all those Duncanville citizens? No. Are half of them about Duncanville citizens? Do we know the percentage or the breakdown of that being Duncanville citizens?
I don't have that exact breakdown in front of me. Um, but again, I would, I, I don't want to misspeak, you know, in, in the sense, but I mean, there are consi, you know, I would say at least probably half, but again, I, we can confirm that, but again, the, um, but I, I would want-
Okay.
Mayor and Council, I'm not going to ask you to speculate on stuff. He doesn't know, he doesn't know.
Right, right. Thank you.
Mr. Olson, may I?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just going to add, so, so we are in the process of, of getting that spreadsheet that, you know, is reflected in, you know, Slide 23 of tonight's presentation, and that has all the addresses, so that we can, you know, give you that, that summary total of-
Okay.
Resident versus non-resident.
And then, um, so I'm understanding there are a number of variances they're asking for, um, with the building being within the height requirement. Um, go over the variances that we are asked to approve tonight, and that would be my final.
As part of the PD, when, when we, when Olson did the independent zoning analysis, again, there, there was original concerns about the height, you know, there is a, I would say, I wa, I don't want to use the word discrepancy, but the way that height is considered, for example, your ordinance is two and a half stories. There is a lot of interpretation when it comes to what is a story or what is two and a half stories, uh, when we originally did it. Again, traditionally, you could go anywhere from between 10 to 15 feet, you know, it could be a per, per story. So, in the case of the applicant, you know, and their proposal, one story could be 36 feet, because again, they're not, it's not a two-story scenario. So that was one of the things, is part of why the recommendation for the PD. The landscaping standards were another, uh, consideration. Again, there are, uh, the applicant has submitted a tree, uh, preservation survey that is going to identify. Uh, again, most of it can't be a stain, but when you actually look at your landscape requirements and the size of the property, and the requirement is, is significant, um, I think, uh, the applicant, as part of their proposal, has done a good job, and I would say in the sense of maintaining what's out there today, and one of the reasons for the variance was to minimize some of those requirements when it comes to the actual ground coverage and what's actually required per square foot and everything else as part of your proposed development. Uh, as I mentioned, as part of the, the PD or variance, your ordinance only regulates parking lot lighting up to 30 feet standard, so there is, eh, you know, eh, I would say an issue or discrepancy there, uh, uncertainty of what that would be. When we looked at it, 30 feet is not going to work for, for the stadium, and that, again, proposal by the applicant, looking at different lighting, lighting variation, they did mention that earlier tonight, that they're going from, you know, six poles to four, making sure that the lights shine down. So that's another variance, or, or again, consideration amendment from the ordinance. The building articulation that was also discussed is another, uh, concern that they had, again, and their, their proposal was to increase the masonry on the project to not have the articulation. Your ordinance requires every 30 feet to have a three-foot bump out and, and bump back in. There was concerns from just, uh, TEA standards for, for schools and safety, and that's why they're proposing the increase in masonry to reflect not having to put in the bump outs. Um, it's a pretty flat roof as well, so that those articulation standards are, are part of that one as well.
Excuse me one second, sir.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney, do you have a, do we have a list? That's what you want, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Let's get the list of what the conditions to approval are, because that's what you're asking for, correct?
Yes. Um, and then I have, you, you triggered a thought, trees. Um, what permits have they, and let me know if I'm going out of bounds, Mr. Attorney.
We have a tree mitigation ordinance, so I assume they want some relief from that, so I assume that they asked that-
Has there been any work on the property thus far and the grading?
There's been a grading permit issue. No. You get to ask questions. You can ask me anything you want, because I ain't an applicant.
Can I ask about the work being performed if it had a permit on the property?
I think it's irrelevant.
Okay. Thank you.
How's that?
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no, first of all, ju, just as a reminder, City Attorney, it's going to take six votes in favor to approve this.
Yes. The land area of 200 feet immediately adjacent to the development is over 20% based on the map that I gave you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So it doesn't matter what P and Z does, it require, either way, it requires a supermajority.
Okay. Co, couple of comments, and, and I'm, I'm someone that's, I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, I tend not to get too emotional about an, anything, one way or the other, and I, I do try my best to evaluate situations, uh, as objectively as possible, and I try to look at, uh, the, the evidence and the information that's put in front of me. And, uh, I believe, I know we all received the, the emails in opposition, and there was several points that were brought up in each one of those, and, uh, you know, I, I really wanted to see, are these concerns valid? Um, and then with the, what the school is proposing, what they're offering, what they're saying that they can, or can, you know, can do, uh, or is that, you know, can, can they make those things happen? Will, will they commit, uh, and stick with what they claim to do? But I, I just want to go through, uh, just, you know, in response to, uh, the specific concern, so with, with the traffic and the safety, um, with the traffic mitigation, um, that's being proposed by, by the school, with, uh, can, can we see that again? Okay, so I, with, with the left turn off of Cockroil Hill onto the property, and, and there's going to be a, a three-way turn signal there? Is that, the three-way turn signal? Does that mean traffic stops going south on Cockroil Hill? Like all traffic stops, or just traffic turning into the property?
There, there will be a three-way traffic stop at that location.
Okay. So a, all traffic going south on Cockroil Hill would, would stop at that light when it's red?
If it's red, correct.
Okay. All right. Um, a, and then, the, the additional, so the turn lane there would be, that, that's an additional lan, lane, turning right into the property, so that would be an additional lane that would be created for people going into the property, right? And then-
On the southbound, on Cockroil Hill?
Yes, sir. There's a right, right turn arrow there, so that's a, yeah, that's an additional lane.
There'll be a, additional turn lane, correct, to turn into the property if you're going north, yes.
Okay. And then, another additional light on Daniel Dell going, uh, east toward De Soto, correct?
Correct. That'll be part of Phase Two.
It's a four-way.
That was identified and recommended as part of the TIA study and the traffic management plan for Phase Two, when the middle school goes in, it will not go in as part of Phase One, which is the high school.
Okay. And it does go from three lanes going toward De Soto, down, drops down to one almost right, right away, once you get to the De Soto side, correct?
I believe you are correct, yes, sir.
And I guess, well, one, one lane going each way though, right? Okay.
Yeah, it shows, it shows on the diagram, just past the Duncanville border.
Okay. I, I guess, so my, my question is, looking at what's being proposed to help improve the potential traffic situation, um, would these measures help the, the traffic, because the traffic problems that are there now are significant? I mean, I, you know, we play soccer at Harrington Park, so we drive Cockroil Hill quite often. Uh, I have, I have a route that I run down Daniel Dell into De Soto, and, I mean, I hold my breath every time I'm in, in, in that intersection there. But with these additional traffic control measures, would this help with the safety in, in that area, whether or not the school were there? A, and I'd like to hear that from a-
Please, please refrain, refrain from making comments in the audience, please. Everything's been cool, calm, and collected till now. Let the councilman speak.
And, and I, yeah, I would like to hear from a, a traffic engineer, someone who can tell us objectively whether or not th, these traffic control measures would improve or make worse the traffic, that, that current, the current traffic situation that we have.
Councilman Coons, we can, we do have, uh, Shahab Mohammed here, our Deputy Assistant Director of Public Works, who, uh, did review the, the, uh, report from Walter Moore, so she may be able to expand and answer some questions on that, so Shahab's come up to the podium right now.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so, uh, to answer your question, um, I heard you saying you wanted to hear a traffic engineer answer that, so I'm not a traffic engineer, but I have to tell you that, um, I'm a civil engineer. Now, uh, we've been on and off, involved in definitely, the city have hired a traffic engineer, basically, a specialized traffic engineer, to, um, review, do a peer review, basically, on the traffic engineer that, um, Life School hired and designed, uh, those, um, as a recommendation of the traffic study, designed those additional elements. Now, um, the results of that analysis, um, was showing the recommended improvements by adding, adding the intersections and the lanes that you just mentioned. Uh, those additions resulted, or based on the engineering analysis, in, uh, basically bringing the, uh, the level of service of that, of those streets, uh, intersections to where it wa, it would be before adding the school traffic, or improves it a little bit too. So that's where, it depends on the, where the location is. It, it did, um, the analysis that was done and studied by the city hired engineer, um, really shows that the level of service with these recommended implementations would, uh, be similar to what it is before adding the school traffic, or improves it a little bit too.
Is the peer review in the record? Is the peer review, she said there was a peer review, is it in the record?
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
I ask if it's part of the packet, is it part of the record? Did someone present it and put it into the record?
Yeah. Walter P. Moore have, uh, presented twice to the P and Z, um-
Tonight, for them. If it's not in the record, they can't consider it.
But it was in the ba, in the packet submitted to council.
Is it in?
The TIA.
I want to ask this one more time. Is it in the record or not?
Um, I'm not sure.
We just see the check to see if it was indeed in the packet and included what was presented tonight.
If you want it in the record, if they want it in the record, well, reopen the hearing and put it in the record. But I don't want people talking about something and referring to just much hearsay, and I respect your opinion, by the way, but if, if we got the report, give them the report. Let them read it, and then they can ask a question.
As part of the submitted packet that was publicly published tonight, you have the TIA and the TNP review letter, that was done by a third party-
I, I'm going to tell, I'm going to say this, for the third time, is it in the record that was submitted for them to consider? That's why we have a public hearing.
If you're included in the packet, it's part of the record that-
I'm not, I'm not presenting the case. You are. All I'm asking is, is it in the record? Does the council want it in the record? Do you want the packet in the record?
Mr. Coons has a comment?
Is, are, are you referring to the, the TNP, the traffic management plan?
I just want it in, I just want it in the record, so that-
Because there is, there is an attachment in-
Attachment, attachment G to Walter P. Moore review letter.
Attachment D is the Life School Traffic Management Plan. It says, "Confirmed by the city's consultant, Walter P. Moore, and a third-party reviewer."
That is for the fourth time.
Yeah. The proposed traffic management plan.
But is that what she's talking about? I have no idea.
Yeah, that is, that, that is it.
Yes.
So, it's in the packet, but it's not in the record. So if you want it in the record, I would suggest you reopen and put it in the record. It's not that hard. It's okay. I just don't want anyone to say, "We considered a bunch of stuff, and they didn't have a chance to respond to it, and they didn't have a chance to talk about it." I'd be griping at them the same way I'm griping at him if they were referring to something that wasn't in the record.
Okay, Mr. Hager, so you're suggesting we reopen the public hearing?
And if you want the packet in, you offer it, you accept it, it's in the record, boom. When you close the public hearing-
All right, let's go ahead, let's go ahead. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
Motion, and a, I have a motion for Mr. McNabb, net, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Gooden at 10:17 PM. Well, well, sorry, vote, vote.
Yes. Go ahead and vote to reopen the public hearing.
It's a vote to reopen the public hearing? Okay, at, at 10:17 PM. All right.
Now, a, as a result of reopening the public hearing, does the council want the packet, the public packet, put into the record of these proceedings for you to consider the public hearing and the evidence deduced at the public hearing, and making your decision whether or not to approve or deny this zoning application?
Mr. Hager, do you need that in the form of a vote?
No, I just want you to nod your head. Okay.
Yes, we want it.
So, Mayor and Council, the packet that is the public packet that was initially provided to you is now in the record and part of the, the information which you can use to make an informed decision about either granting or denying the zoning application.
Now, may I close the public hearing?
Well, does anyone have anything else they want them to look at?
Well, no, because I might bring up something else.
Okay, all right.
There was an issue earlier about all the notices that went out and the responses. I have that. Do you want that in the public record?
Yes.
And it shows their addresses, what city they live in, whether it's De Soto, Duncanville, Saskatchewan, Calgary, anywhere.
Yes, sir.
All right. I will put that in the record, and I will give it to the city secretary.
Okay. And while we're there, um, we were talking earlier about the, um, petitions.
Petitions are in the record.
They're in the record, all right. Okay, Mr. Coons, do you-
I, I, unlike the rest of you, have a lot of grief, so that, that's why-
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Coons, do you want to continue?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, uh, my apologies, I didn't, I didn't know that was going to happen, so, uh, but, so, back to, so your statements, uh, Ms. Mohammed, do you agree with the attachment that we have in our packets that confirm the city's consult, consultant, third-party reviewer, the proposed traffic management plan does meet or exceed the requirements for traffic safety standards in the city of Duncanville requirement? So basically, you're saying that this, this plan with the school would pretty much keep the traffic issues as they are, without the school would improve traffic somewhat?
According to the study and the letters of support from independent engineers, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, what engineers do is really can just-
Now, I can answer the questions. Public hearing's been closed.
Oh, we're open.
You didn't close it?
We're open right now.
But here's, look, hearing was changed, for anyone to get up and say whatever they need to say, and that's happened.
No, sir, we, we opened it, we haven't closed it back.
So now you can read going back?
Well, we, no, we, we reopened, we-
I don't care. I get paid either way.
No, sir, we reopened only for the purpose of inserting this in the record.
Right.
All right. All right.
So if you, if you don't want it-
All right, I want to clarify this so we can move on. Do we need to close the public hearing at this point in time?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing by Councilman McNabb.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gooden. Vote to close the public hearing. Done at 10:21. Thank you. All right.
Question he wants answered.
I don't remember what my question was.
Up and down.
Yeah, so, and I think my, my question was answered, and the, how many, can I ask somebody else a question?
You can ask some a question.
What about the applicant?
You can ask some a question.
Okay. I have a question.
What I don't want to happen is you ask a question and then go on a 35-minute diatribe.
I've got simple questions for the applicant. Please don't go into a 35-minute diatribe. How many months a year is a school open? And what are the hours of pickup and drop-off?
The hours of pickup and drop-off.
He's talking to the mic, talk to the mic, please.
I, I don't know those exact, but it's, it's in the traffic study and what was done with the traffic study. I think it's around seven, and then three o'clock in the afternoon to four-ish.
All right, thank you.
Four days, and they also go four days a week.
Oh, four days a week, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, just a few, like I said, I really tried to do my research on this. I actually went to the Waukesha Hachy school. I didn't let them know I was going, to look at the, during drop-off and pickup, just to see what it actually looked like. And I was shocked on 77, which is a major thoroughfare that goes into Waukesha Hachy, lots of fast-moving traffic, that there was no stacking on 77. And there was no stacking on Butcher Road or 387, which is perpendicular to 77. Now, that's, that's what I saw. Now, on the other hand, I've heard about the Oak Cliff location. And my question is, because my understanding with the Oak Cliff location is there is, there are some significant traffic issues, at least. Yeah, I, at least, it's been commonly reported that there are more traffic issues at the Oak Cliff school. And so, what might be a reason for that disparity for, because again, at least from what I saw at the Waukesha Hachy school, and not having the driveway or being master-planned, somehow they managed to keep stacking off of those major thoroughfares. But it seems like there's a difference at the Oak Cliff school, so what could be a reason for that?
Yeah, the reason for that would be, is that Waukesha Hachy and this school, too, are purpose-built from day one on new campuses. And Oak Cliff was an older campus that uses the existing parking lots and other things. And also, quite frankly, they were a much older school, and of the development of charter schools and what the traffic and the car queuing and everything else has evolved and been studied, and that, the new increases of those are, are a lot more stringent and more purposely designed, is why Oak Cliff does have some of the issues that they do. They, they are, they were kind of landlocked to what amount of land they had, and so they can only do the traffic that they can do on that site, where we have a lot more site than they do, and that, and Waukesha Hachy does, too, and was designed that way to accommodate those.
And if I could add, this is evident from the picture that's up on the screen right now, in that we are able to design a more circuitous route for that driveway, which allows for more queuing, because it's essentially a longer road. So this is another reason why the 105 acres that we're looking to develop here is something that Life School has, has cherished and valued, and why they decided to locate this area.
Okay, so I guess, what I'm hearing is, is that the Waukesha Hachy campus was, it was master-planned from, from the very beginning. The Oak Cliff campus was-
We don't have the luxury at the Oak Cliff campus to have a driveway like that.
All right, thank you. So I wanted to talk about community character, because that was another concern that was brought up. And the emails that we got said our neighborhood is characterized by its peaceful, family-oriented environment, and introducing large-scale commercial development would disrupt this character and erode the quality of life for residents. And that, that's a word, disrupt and disturbance are words that have come up multiple times this evening. And I can say, you know, when we, when we moved here, you know, our house, you know, we went into the backyard before we bought the house, and it was quiet, there's a creek down there, there's, there's trees. And I do try to put myself in the shoes of residents who, okay, you pick a house, and you have a certain environment and how things look and feel, and you do have a certain expectation of, you know, that environment staying more or less as it is. And I try to imagine how we would feel if, you know, we went out our back door one day to sit in the garden, and all of a sudden there was a, a commercial property, or, or a sports venue, or, or whatever it is. And so, you know, I really want to kind of get a feel for, like, what, what does this look like? So I went and visited with, with some of the residents and talked to them. I went through the neighborhood, this neighborhood next door. If I'm in my backyard on Halsey or MacArthur, one of these roads here, can I see the school from my, my backyard with that eight-foot wall and with the trees? Would I be able to see the school visually?
When the trees are matured, it would be difficult, but there were, from certain places within there, yes, you would be able to see probably maybe the top of the building or, or some other things, depending on how you were looking at that fence. It's not, it's not 20-foot tall, so, you know, eight-foot, you may be able to see some. I can't tell for indefinite and wouldn't want to, that you can't see anything of that school from there.
There are some diagrams in what we have in front of us, not on this slide, but were presented earlier, that show the sightlines. A lot of this depends on how tall you are, where you're standing in relation to the fence.
And if I have a two-story house, I guess, I'll probably see it pretty easily, right?
Second window, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and, and then with, you know, I did have a question about the, the bleachers. So this is a 1,500-seat facility, right? Not, not 15,000, as, as the email said, but it's a 1,500-seat facility as compared to, so, De Soto, that's 11,000, right? Duncanville High School stadium's probably about the same, right? About 10,000 or so. But if the height of the bleachers were a concern, would the school be, be open to bringing down that number, or bringing down the height of the bleachers, and maybe expanding the bleachers horizontally?
Yeah, we can, we can modify those bleachers. There's, there's a point where, like, the press box maybe gets too low to see, but yes, we can. I know it doesn't affect, yes, we can.
And I, so I know it's late, so, and I've got a lot that I want to talk about and ask, but I'll try to, try to be brief. Is, is it, again, I'm trying to, what I have heard almost, almost unanimously here tonight is that it is a good school, and even those in opposition say, hey, this, this looks like a good school. But there, there are these particular concerns, and again, visually, and then with, with the sound, there, there's no way of measuring, I guess, in, in decibels, or try to figure exactly, you know, how loud would the band be, or how loud would it be if, if the stadium were full? That we, we can't measure that objectively in any way, right?
I, I mean, it, it's all going to depend on the size of the crowd and how, you know, what's going on. I'll say it's going to be significantly less than the 10,000-foot, or 10,000-capacity stadium for Duncanville ISD, the 11,000-capacity stadium for De Soto ISD that these residents hear from however many miles away, or significantly less than that.
How many games a year? Home games do they have?
It depends. They're, they don't have a schedule for it, but-
Right now, about how many home games do they have a year?
Five home, five home games.
Five nights a year for home football games?
About five home games?
Yes.
Yeah.
Five home games with the band, all, all year, for 365 days a year, you got five? That's it?
You can have five home football games.
For football.
Where y'all playing?
He's an, he's an architect, I'm a lawyer, I don't-
Okay, all right, so, all right, so, yeah, so five games and average attendance, currently average attendance at those games. Are you filling the stadium, or how many people?
For some other games they do. Other ones will be like three-quarters full at the Waukesha Hachy.
Now, are we talking about a varsity team?
Their existing team is, the existing stadium that they currently have now is the same as what we were, the first phase, 15 and 500. I think they may be expanding it now.
How many different levels of teams do you have?
They have a, three.
You have like a varsity, a junior varsity, and-
And then when middle school would come on.
And a B team, okay. So there's more games then? There's not just the five games, that's only for the varsity?
That was a-
Why is he allowed to speak from the back? He's not-
The, the, the five, the five games, the big five games that the band will be at in the, in the big Friday night games.
Now, I'll tell you from personal experience as a high school mascot, that crowds for junior varsity and middle school games are significantly lower.
Okay.
Do you want to answer the questions that are asked?
All right, I'm sorry to create the confusion. I do appreciate the answers, but let me stick to the, the rules here. So, we've heard, and I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Coons, but there's not just five games. I mean, if we, and if you, if you really can't answer that, I'll ask somebody to come up and answer it, no offense.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, please.
That answer was respectful to game football and band.
Can someone, can someone step up? Do you have a coach here?
No.
All right. Thank you, Coach. All right, so the question is, how many teams?
Yeah, well, right now it's JV and a varsity team for football.
Mayor, I'd like to hear, hear, hear his name.
My name is Scott Thrush.
Okay.
And address?
417 Montpelier Lane, Red Oak, Texas.
Okay, I'll take care of that, Councilman. Okay, so, how many, how many games between varsity and JV, home games, do you expect to have?
Varsity has five, JV has five. The band only plays at varsity, five nights a year.
All right, but there's going to be 10 games.
For football, correct. We do have soccer, so there'll be about 10 home soccer games. And JV and varsity play on the same night. No band, no announcing, no noise.
Okay, well, yeah, there's still noise. I mean, we're, we're a soccer family, there's noise.
Nothing amplified, no, no music.
No speakers, no speakers.
We don't play music for soccer.
But they do have night games?
They are at night.
Okay.
They start around 5:00, and they finish sometime around 8:00 or 9:00.
That's all. I'm going to let Mr. Coons continue, because all I was interested in is finding out, five didn't sound right. And I, I know that y'all didn't know, so no, no harm, no foul. You've straightened that out for me, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, really just have one more question, and then just a statement. Would, would Life School entertain the idea of having some kind of a curfew where you didn't have games after 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock, whatever that time would be?
I don't think 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock is doable, but absolutely, as we expressed in that letter that the mayor referenced earlier, Life School would abide by any restrictions that the city wishes to offer that would be universally applied to other public schools in the area.
All right, please, please, let's, again, I know there's some things that y'all are thinking of out there, but we've got to keep some order, and I just, I just can't have any more outbursts, please. All right? All right, so, Mr. Coons, are you done?
Just, just one statement, and then I'm done. So, you know, with, with the, the list of those who responded for and against, that if you go through that list, first you see a lot of the fours, which are mostly from the neighborhood and the surrounding area, and then, yes, most of those against are outside of Duncanville. That's, I certainly confirm that.
The other way around.
Or the, the ones that are for, against, yeah. The ones that are for are mostly outside of Duncanville. However, I do have to say this, is that most of the people that were here tonight that were for happened to be in District 3, which is my district. And, you know, for my district, at least, the response, and again, we're not close to the property, we're not close to where the school would be, so that perspective is different. But most of my constituents are in support of the school, so I'll end with that. Thank you.
I don't see any lights, any, any more questions or comments before we move on? Ms. Gooden?
Mayor, this is more of just a comment. I did go to one of the games in November, well, I drove through Waukesha Hachy parking lot, November of 2024. And I was able to just drive different points of the parking lot to see about the sound. And in every point of the parking lot, I could hear the game that was going on that night. Then I drove across the street to see if I could hear the sound of the game, and I could hear the sound of the game. Now, I would like to also comment that when I was in high school, my parents purchased a home intentionally by a high school, so that way, when I didn't have a driver's license, I could get to school. But they had a choice to move near that high school. There is no current high school or school on this property, and when the homeowners purchased their home, I don't think they anticipated having a V, a home or a high school being built in their backyards. A number of the opposition is strong opposition from Duncanville. The few that spoke tonight in favor, there were some from outside of Duncanville, and then a lot of the other people in favor are from outside of Duncanville. And as the current at-large, I have the entire city, I have to consider. And as it relates to the traffic study, traffic study is going to pretty much remain the same with or possible little improvement. And that's already a concern for our citizens here. So those are just the comments that I wanted to make. Thank you.
Anna Baker?
Mine's more of a comment on curiosity. The, the study y'all referred to indicated, and I'm not basing my opinion on this, I just thought I was curious, because of what I do, this is stuff that I would look at in my profession. And, and y'all come up with $800,000, $8 million in tax-generated revenue for us, and my feeling is, is probably it's based on the school rating, right? So the school ratings probably, I'm guessing, public schools. I, I, and I looked, I tried to find information, I've looked at this, trying to find on the economic impact studies, and how charter schools impact neighborhoods and towns and tax base, and I've not been able to find- and towns and tax base, and I've not been able to find anything around that. So, what I would request at, at future time, if this comes back around, um, that I get the information that was used to develop this study and see what that is. That's a significant number, and I'm, I'm just curious if it's based on public school ratings or a charter school in a neighborhood?
It is based on public, open enrollment schools.
Okay.
Which includes charter schools?
Right, but the majority of that information, significant amount of that information is gonna be based on public school data, right?
Charter schools or public schools?
Yeah, that's about my question. Okay, thank you.
But we did, we did also discount it, the percentage of 10% for good schools for that.
Okay, his question's been answered, thank you. Mr. Mac Burnett?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and when we make motions, we make motions in a, in a positive, okay, so we're not gonna make a, you, you don't make negative motions, but I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve.
A second. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett, seconded by Councilwoman Cherry Brown, um...
And before you vote, that includes to granting of the conditions that they requested in the PD, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, just, I wanna make that clear.
Motion to approve with, yes.
Okay, and so with, with that motion, I'm, a little bit of discussion now, and, and I'll be quick. Um, I've reviewed the application carefully, I've heard the presentation tonight, I've heard from the citizens, all of the citizens, and all of the stakeholders in the Life School that are here, and have contacted me. I've evaluated the light, the noise, the traffic. I'm not an engineer, but I still know what the traffic is like right now, today, on the ground out there, and it's bad at almost any time of the day. And then I, and then I look at the highest and best used, in my opinion, for where we are as a city, and what our city needs are, um, and as, as presented to us from some, um, some consultants that we have. So, with that, I'm ready to vote.
So, and, and Mayor, we need to hear from the city attorney again as well.
Yeah, again, there's, uh, over 20% of the area within 200 feet, so a supermajority is required. It would take a vote of six to one minimum to pass this, uh, application as presented.
Okay, so Mr. Mac Burnett, would you repeat the motion, then we'll vote?
The motion is to approve as presented.
Okay, any other questions? We're good? Alright, please vote. Okay, the motion fails. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, that, that finalizes individual considerations. We're gonna move on to, uh, Item 6, Staff and Board Reports. Duncanville Fire Department Quarterly Report. Okay, let's do that, and then we'll find Chief Caneely.
He's right over there.
All right, we'll give, give, give it to her.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, uh, yes, I'll talk to, I'll talk to code enforcement on this.
Alright, we're, we're taking a short recess.
Sir, sir. I wanna get the address real quick.
Well, no, no, you, 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 there could always be a lawsuit, okay, so keep that in mind. He approaches again with a different presentation. Yeah, I don't know, there's a time period, but I don't know, but, but, um, so, so, yes, you don't have to stay up at night worrying about it, but it, it's a possibility. But I think it, it, there's some period of time. He, he took a short break. That felt good. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and, um, resume our, our meeting at 10:53, and we're going to move into Item 6A, Fire Department Quarterly Report. Chief Caneely.
Alright, good evening. Chris Caneely, Duncanville Fire Chief. Pleasure being with you all this evening, and we'll give you a quick update. I know it's been a long night. Uh, new hires, we like that. We have Brendan Villanueva, Calves Stith, and Casey Sneed, and, uh, fine-looking young men there. We have one vacancy, and the next slide's gonna address that. That's why our wonderful retirement of Assistant Chief Greg Chase retired, and we were full staff, and so it's his fault now we have one vacancy, but in all seriousness, uh, uh, we had a very nice ceremony, and, uh, well-deserved, and we thank him for his 32 years of service to the city of Duncanville. Good man. We have two members in paramedic school, Colton Broski's gonna be graduating August 1st, 2025, coming up quickly, and Casey Vincent, he'll be graduating November 2025. And we have a promotional exam coming up for our vacant fire marshal, which creates also a deputy fire marshal promotional opportunity on July 29th, here towards the end of the month. Uh, some accomplishments, our medical, medical services, EMS, SOGs have been updated. Uh, now, this is just the administrative things that we need to do with our playbook on how we operate. Equally, our department policies have been updated as well, and we have a, a regional fire training, uh, class that I myself did on some experiences when I, uh, some line of duty deaths we had when I was in the Houston Fire Department that are definitely applicable to our experiences here. So, it's taught 195 members amongst the four fire departments here in the best southwest. And our Mercy Operations Center exercise, Lauren Sanchez does a great job, and we had a tabletop exercise, and when you exercise, you get better, and so, no, no difference with a tabletop. Uh, Bloom Fest was very successful, we helped coordinate that with our partners in the Police Department and other departments, and equally on the 4th of July, that, that went well, and, uh, we, uh, appreciate the opportunity to make sure it's a safe event. Projects underway, our first due is a fire software program that y'all approved on May 6th, and it will facilitate improved tracking of our data, uh, versus our other, uh, record management system, uh, specifically to the matrix report, and, uh, so, that training that with the first due software starts June 23rd, and it's ongoing presently, and, uh, some good results are gonna come from that. Um, I'm a big believer in third-party validation, and we're pursuing the Texas Fire Chiefs Association Best Practices to get that designation. Uh, that's gonna be about a two-year project. Uh, there's a lot involved there, and well, it should be, it's worth attaining. And then Insurance Services Office, Class 1, uh, that's a, a, an opportunity to help lower, um, commercial and residential insurance rates in the city. If we go from our current Class 2 rating to a Class 1, and we hope to achieve that by FY '26. And, speaking of Chief Chase earlier, uh, I'll be interviewing Officer Candice, we'll have a, a, a panel, uh, representing our, uh, local, uh, labor union, as well as other members in the community, and to, uh, select the next Assistant Fire Chief position, and those that are, want to apply for the position, you have to be a, an officer rank, if you will, captain and above, and that closes July 18th. And so, we'll be doing that in short order, 'cause I'm ready to get some help there in administration.
Chief, without mentioning names, um, are, do we have anybody internally that's applying?
No, there's no one in that spot currently. So, there's not an acting position, but anyway, I hope to get it filled within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, but, but nobody, nobody that's currently on staff qualifies or has applied?
Oh, yeah, that we've had, it's all, but per civil service, it's only internal candidates that can apply.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so he'll definitely be a member, uh, already of the Duncanville Fire Department.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir. And, uh, we're a very busy fire department. You see in the third quarter, uh, 1,848 calls for service, uh, fire-related were 35. Of those, there were 10 building fires, and other fire-related calls for service, 480. And our EMS calls, uh, we call ourselves a fire department, but EMS is our core business, as you can see, with 1,323 calls, and we completed 95, uh, fire marshal inspections. And any questions? Thank you very much for your opportunity to present.
Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief, thank you for the presentation as well. Uh, wha, what are the steps to get to the, uh, one, the designation as a one from a two to a one?
Well, uh...
What, what are we working on, I guess? That's what I'm asking.
Well, as far as the reduction in, in cost for insurance, or specifically what we need to do as a...
What we need to do as a city.
Well, and I presented on this a few, a couple of months ago, but basically, we need to do some additional, uh, training in certain categories, and, uh, so we're working on that. Uh, we have to do some, as examples, have some material training, officer training, that we need to get some additional hours there. And our pre-fire planning program, that we have a, uh, we had got our iPads fixed that have cellular connectivity, and that precluded us from getting the, using the software program before, 'cause it would keep on disconnecting. And so, it's, it's relatively, uh, very minor what we still have to achieve, and so I feel very confident and, uh, that this goal will be achieved by next year.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Coons?
I move to close the public hearing. Now, I, uh, Chief, I wanted to just, uh, compliment, uh, some of your EMT, so, I meant, meant to say this during the, uh, council member announcements, but at the 4th of July celebration, I was out at a couple, some of the rides, and, you had long lines for the rides, and there was a lady, she looked like she was about to pass out, her daughter was kinda holding her, and she looked, and so we, you know, we called, you know, 911, and I, I know I didn't do a good job describing where we were, you know, it's, yeah, like, where, where are you, the dispatch, right? Yeah, where, where are you exactly? Uh, I said, well, James Collins Boulevard, we're at the 4th of, but it was just kinda, and I'm trying to keep my eye on this lady, and, you know, I'm talking to the, uh, the dispatcher, and within... And within two minutes, I saw the ATV, the guys coming up, I mean, looking to see where, I mean, it was that fast. I couldn't believe how fast they got out there, especially with, again, my poor description of where we were. But, yeah, I just wanted to, you know, again, just compliment, you know, the EMT and paramedics, and you could pass that along to them that, I mean, it was just exceptional. And, you know, I felt, hey, this is probably the safest place in the world right now, here at 4th of July in Dunkinville with the fire and police, so thank you.
Thank you for that feedback.
And the lady was okay. I think she had low blood pressure or something like that, but they took care of her, and everything turned out well.
Thank you for that feedback I'll pass along to the firefighters. Thank you.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, 6B.
I'd like to add, if it was the police, we would've got there a little bit quicker. So. All right, so our quarterly report, get through this pretty quick. Unfortunately, I kind of wish there were a lot of people here, because our staff did some exceptional work, and they certainly need to be publicly praised. So our staffing, we have exceeded, as far as, as long as I've been there, 27 years. We've hired 11 police officers since October of last year to date. That's the most we've ever done. And it's not because we're lowering standards. It's not because we're doing anything to allow them to slip in through the cracks. The people who are doing these backgrounds are the people that they're gonna be working alongside. So if anything, our standards have increased. So I want to emphasize and certainly congratulate our background investigators and our recruiters. Right now, we have three vacancies. We have a test coming up on August 23rd, and there's no doubt in my mind, we're gonna fill those three vacancies. Now, that doesn't mean the 11 that we hired are all on the street answering calls. They're in some form of training, which you'll see here. And it's a long list, as I said, 11 people in a year. So they're in some form of training, whether it's in the police academy, whether it's in in-service training or field training. So we have quite a few. The good thing is, is we have really good field training officers that are getting them through this training quickly and effectively. Our staff development, one of the things that I'm big on is leadership training. And you'll see here what we're doing. All of the supervisory staff has gone through the FBI trilogy, which begins with supervisory, then command, then executive training. We actually received an award from the FBI for having all of our supervisors. When we received it, all went through this three-week training. It's a significant award that we received. Officer Piku attended a new supervisor training. So my big thing is continuity of operations. If somebody goes down, we have somebody trained, ready to step into that role immediately without any gaps. Because the citizens of Dunkinville certainly expect the same service regardless who is in that hole. Assistant Chief Will Cott's attended the Texas Police Association Conference, and then it goes down there. Now, he is currently out. He is in Boston attending PERF, which is the Police Executive Research Forum. It is, I've been through it in 2018. It is an immersive class. You have instructors from Harvard, John Hopkins, MIT, come in and just teach you about ethics and leadership. So it's really good. It's going to help him stand here and give you guys presentations as well. The other thing I'm very proud of is when we re-implemented our bike unit. I think that certainly bridges some of the gap that we have with our community. A lot of people like to see bikes. They like to see officers on bikes, so they engage these bike officers. They were first introduced really at Bloomfest, but July 4th is when we really highlighted them. You have 15,000 people approximately in that park, so I guarantee you, 90% of the people saw them rolling through the park. Hopefully, you guys did too. They looked really good. And then Assistant Chief Tiarina, who's sitting behind me, attended the Law Enforcement Management Institute for Command Staff Leadership. So we're constantly learning. That's the big focus on this slide, is we're constantly learning. The RISE unit, you guys know, obviously, we pulled Officer Ambrosio back due to staffing. I have great news. He is going to be reassigned to the RISE unit the end of July. That's going to be a significant help. He is doing that, that unit ancillary to his primary duty in patrol. So now he and Talia, our crime victim's advocate, will be able to do this full-time. They will also, in addition to being reactive in follow-ups, they're going to respond to a lot of these calls initially, which then helps our officers focus from that to another critical assignment. So in going through theirs, their webpage, I'm not sure if you guys have noticed, we added a webpage. That QR code will take you right to it, and there's application if you do need assistance. You can fill out the application. We've, since he's done this part-time, they've assisted approximately 27 new clients. Victim advocacy, she's assisted 94 contacts, or victims. So a lot of work. Now, they are being reassigned outside of the Police Department. We feel that somebody who needs help probably doesn't want to go to the Police Department, because they may fear arrest or something. So they are outside the Police Department on the satellite side. In fact, they're right over here at 103. Patrol activity, comparison at a glance, you'll notice our traffic stops are 2,087. Our calls for service were 13,000, a little less than last year. And then our citations, no insurance will seem to always lead that category. Expired registration, no driver's license speeding, and expired driver's license. Citizens on Patrol, the BMV report cards, this is a great event. It allows our citizens on patrol to go out there and kind of force multiply to help educate our citizens and visitors on what they need to do to ensure that they're not a victim of a BMV. So Winko, and they, I don't want to say randomly select, but what they do is they look at the crime stats and determine, okay, these are gonna be our best spots to go to, whether it's Kroger, Costco, or Winko. Our department activities, we had two use-of-force incidents, all found to be lawful. One vehicle pursuit, and then two complaints, they were internal complaints, not external. So our community engagement, Officer Arias leads that effort. We lost Mr. Tucker, who was the CP AAA president during this quarter. He was certainly a strong advocate for the Police Department. He was always there for us, and he'll certainly be missed. So we have a Citizens Police Academy, the Fall '25 session, Class 64 begins September 2nd. Applications, you can fill them out there with a QR code, or you can contact Officer Arias at her office with her phone number or email to sign up. It's a great event, a great class, get kind of peek behind the curtain on what the Police Department offers. Our Nibers Group A offenses, April through June, I know there's a lot of stuff here. What you'll notice is the majority of this is theft from motor vehicles. And motor vehicle thefts, that's our stolen vehicles and burglaries of vehicles. I'll tell you, nationally, stolen vehicles is through the roof, and we're not any different than that. Now, what we've done to prevent this or eradicate it is we've done overtime assignments in our corridor. And it, there's a lot of people out there. A lot of times, what we have seen are suspects in their vehicles are operating a vehicle with a paper tag. So we have initiated another operation where we are targeting vehicles with paper tags. We've confiscated a ton of them. We've done both. Both will be presented to you at a later date, the outcome of that. So we're doing everything that we can to mitigate some of these offenses. So Nibers Group A compared to other cities, Cedar Hill, DeSoto. Now, DeSoto, their June, and Lancaster, their June information wasn't submitted when I pulled this information on July 7th. So this is just comparative to other cities. And then we'll go through April, May, and June on our major crimes. Again, what you'll see, thefts from motor vehicles will certainly be the highest, especially in District 4, because that's where 67 is, and that's where a lot of your businesses are. Hotels, things of that nature. We're gonna do other things to help mitigate this. Our patrol officers, they've done a great job in identifying these suspects. The problem is, a lot of them run from us. And when they flee from a vehicle, a lot of times, we can't pursue that person. And we're looking at coming up with some options on that, on how to mitigate those. In fact, a lieutenant has provided me some amendments, some revisions to our policy. That gives a little more discretion on that. So May, again, you'll see District 4 leading with BMVs. And then June. And then that is it.
Mayor Protem Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. One quick comment. I'm all support, supportive of staff development and professional development. And I do agree, we need to sharpen our skills. But I kind of like Chief Will Cott's authenticity. So as he's going to get his professional development, ask him to still be himself, because a lot of kids in the community can relate to him and see themselves eventually having an option to grow up and become a police chief. So I know he's a little, he's shared with me, he's a little self-conscious of presenting to council, but I always encourage him just to continue to keep exercising that muscle and remain authentic to who he is, because a lot of people can relate to his personality.
Absolutely.
I encourage him.
Chief, I got a, I got a text right after the 4th of July from a longtime resident that I know down in District 4. Said, "The 4th of July celebrations were the best I've seen in 40 years." Exclamation point. Have lived in Dunkinville, I've lived in Dunkinville for 40 years. Congratulations, it was a great family event. The crowds and PD presence was incredible and hospitable. So just want to pass that on, that, you know, people recognize out at the event, while there were a lot of people, I don't know if we've got a tally yet on how many, but they felt safe. And I heard that from people in the, inside the fenced area, so just wanted to pass that on, that...
Well, I appreciate it. And if I may, I want to address that. I want to make sure that we don't get complacent in that, that we start reducing the security moving forward, because that's when chaos begins. And you're right, everywhere we went, there was an officer or firefighter in that area. And in my years that I've been here, I got more people coming up to me saying, "Thank you," whereas in the past, I've gotten other things told to us. So I cannot agree more, but let's stay focused on the safety for sure.
I get, I was really trying to one-up Jeremy on the fire marks. Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I do want to say, because I, you know, I mean, I've kind of looked at those numbers and been looking at them for a number of years, but it seems like things are reducing down regardless. And so there's not like a year-to-year comparison on here. But that's still just the general feel that it's reducing down. I mean, you mentioned we got 11 hires coming on. That's, that's pretty exciting, because I mean, I think it was always at the best maybe five. You know, that was kind of a static number or higher. And just to do that. So you are doing some right things. I know you've worked on recruitment and that line, but there just seems to be a nice shift with this group and accountability as well, so...
It's a culture. And I'll tell you, the quickest way you can change culture is give people ownership. And it's important, because then they know that they have a voice, and that's the important thing. And I'll tell you, what that does, when we hire these 11 officers, is we're able to then fill our internal vacancies. We're still short on patrol, so we need to fill that up, but we're short in CID, we're short in narcotics, we're short in crime suppression, we're short in so many different areas.
But I'm thinking the 6-4 requirement went out, so that's part of the reason why you're getting, all right?
The 6-4? Right, well, maybe.
All the chiefs are 6-4, right? And we have to give a shout-out to Younts, Officer Younts, for helping Pennabaker out.
Mr. Vera Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a comment, just commend you and Fire Chief for the mobility of our medics on that gator, I think is what you call it, and then the bicycles. Because on a big, major event, they can get across that park 100 times faster than on foot or an ambulance, if you will. So congratulations on that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We've got a tally here for the 4th of July event, and it is, drumroll.
According to the Pacer AI data, it's 13,000.
Awesome. That's awesome. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, you too, Chief. Thank you all. So we're done with our business, adjourned at 11:17. Thank you, counsel, thank you.